Good afternoon, and we're going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. I want to know for the record that all council members are present here in the Nat U Hill room, thankfully. Please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to item three on our agenda, and that is adoption of our agenda. Does any council member wish to make an amendment to the agenda as posted? Seeing none, the agenda will stand unless we need to adopt that, Ms. Turner-King. We're good to roll. Awesome. Let's next move on to public comment, the next item on our agenda. We will have a public comment with a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and if we have anyone wishing to make a public comment, you can do so here in the Nat U Hill room, here up at this table. We'll ask you to state your name. You have three minutes. We'll also ask anyone via Teams to raise your hand, and we'll get to you as soon as we can. And so with that, anyone who wishes to make a public comment, come forward here in the Nat U Hill. Or raise your hand on Teams. Okay. I'm going to hold it for just a second. Just as a reiteration, the public is always welcome to make comments here in the Nat U Hill or on Teams, and if that doesn't work for you, all of these councilors up here with me have their emails available on our Monroe County Council page alongside our agendas. Please reach out, whatever method works best for you. That'll next take us to department updates, and there'll be a time limit of 10 minutes per department, and if we have anyone, any department of Monroe County wishing to make a department update here in the Nat U Hill, we'll come forward one at a time, or raise your hand on Teams, and we'll get to you. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing us to come up. I'm Judy Sharp, county assessor, and beside me is Kathy Smith, our new treasurer. We're here today to talk about something that's very, very concerning to us and our employees, I think to the whole county government. We have been told that we are going to be losing our health care provider that we have had for the last 13 years. They are now, it was Everside, and now they have just gone with Marathon, so they're called Everside Marathon. The same group of people, we'd had the same providers and everything, but from what we understand, and to be very honest, we really don't even understand why or what's really going on. We haven't really been given a lot of detail. It was done very quickly, and as a group of employees and elected officials, we didn't have a lot of time to react to this, but as you can see, I've given you all a paper, petitions, that we have a letter that someone wrote, and a very good letter. I can tell you Kathy and I did not write this. I wish I had of. It's a really good one. But right now, we have the assessor, the auditor, the airport, the treasurer, the clerk, the sheriff, and the jail in probation that have actually signed on the petition. We just got this out today, so I know there's going to be more that will be doing this to ask, please, and I will be speaking tomorrow at the commissioners' meeting, please, let's put this on hold for a little bit, give people a little bit more opportunity to find out if it's really necessary. Frankly, I don't see why it's necessary. We haven't really been told much at all. There's been no transparency to this that we can see. We all found out about it two weeks ago on Thursday. We had a department head meeting over at the youth center, and it was, it was, we were told then that this was going to happen, just if, no ands or buts. It was a done deal, and I can tell you that quite a few people, well, everybody was shocked, and a few people stood up and was like, oh, you cannot do this. And a couple of people actually spoke up and shared some very private details. I won't mention their names, but one person stood up and said, if it hadn't been for the clinic, I wouldn't be here today. Doc Michov saved my life twice. I've heard this from numerous county employees. I know in my own office, we have people that have been treated, are being treated as we speak, but we have such great care over there. This doctor is phenomenal. He is a truly family doctor, and I don't know how many of you use this clinic. I know some of you have other health insurance, but I also know some of you do. This man has, I talked to him a couple of weeks ago when this all happened, because I was a part of this county. I was asked to be on that group to set this whole system up 14 years ago, and it was brand new into the whole state of Indiana. We were the first. We were, we were a trailblazer in Indiana to do this, and this was started by the old commissioners, and I, forgive me, please, I know one was, for sure, was Iris, and I know the other one was Joyce Poling, and I can't remember the third. It might have been Brian O'Neill. They were totally behind this. So Iris, you know Iris, she was at every meeting, and it seemed like we had a meeting at least once a day for a year when we were presented with this. It was new to us. We didn't really know what we were getting into, but we knew we had to start saving money. We were drowning in debt from medical insurance. We became self-funding, and it was just, those were the years where we just had no money because we were having to rob Peter to pay Paul constantly for insurance. And we'll be back there if you don't keep, if the council or the commissioners do not keep what's going on. I know we will be, and I don't think there's an employee here that wouldn't pay a little bit more in insurance to keep what we have. This is just not an acute care facility. This facility takes care of us all year long. You have, we have physicals, annual physicals, we have to, whether you want to or not, and you're, it's a phenomenal experience. For the first time that I can remember ever in my life, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for my staff and other people that I've talked to, we've, we're just so comfortable and feel, feel that, feel that we've got really great health care. If you all would try to get a physician in this town right now, it's a good year wait to get on the list. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. A GPs are not even around. If you have to go to IU Health, just shoot yourself now because you're going to sit there. I said that on public TV, didn't I? So I better not get sick. That's why we have to keep Doc. But anyway, it's true. They have a different mandate over there than we do here. He's here for every single one of us. We have 800, about 800 employees. You have to double or triple that with our families. You cannot do that with one nurse practitioner and no help. This nurse practitioner, we won't have, just think, we get a flu shot every year. They come over here, we can go over there, but they sit up at the different offices. We can send our staff over there, and I know I'm probably going over 10 minutes, but this is so important to this whole county to keep this. I know that, this is the commissioners, that they, that they sign a contract. I will be there tomorrow, and I'm sure Kathy will be beside me, Bree's over here. We'll be talking to the commissioners also. I don't know what will happen, but you guys do handle the money, and I know it's already been appropriated. You can get rid of that, too. Come on, guys. I think it's very simple. We just, you find the money, it's there. I've talked to, I've talked to a couple of you. I know the money's there. We've got all sorts of other new monies coming in. We're not hurting for money. If we can find other money for anything else that we want to do, we have a contract with our employees, and we made that contract 13 years ago. Talking to the other department heads, when we hire people, this is one of the big things that we get people to come here, to stay with us, and to stay with us for year after year. I'm going to let Kathy talk for her office. I was kind of representing the whole group of us. If you have any questions, I really appreciate you guys. You've seen more of me this year than you've probably seen the last 10 years. I'm hoping that I don't have to come back for a while. Budgets are coming up, though, and, but, you know, the other thing that was pointed out to us, there has been no transparency in this. I don't know if you're all on the dental plan. That was quite a shock to everybody. They changed our dental insurance. Half my office had to go find a new dentist because this company that we've got now isn't taking most of our insurance, and they don't do fluoride. Not that we owe people, have to have fluoride, but it's just stuff like that. It's just, it's like this constants, you know, nick, nick, nick. So just thought I'd tell you all of that. Kathy, I'm sorry I went in your time.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening, council. I address you tonight as a department head, an elected official of the treasurer's office, and the supervisor of several long-serving county employees, 20, 30 years. The major concern of these employees now is how they will obtain a primary care physician if the clinic changes hands and we no longer are patients of Dr. Michov's. This doctor is well-liked, respected, intuitive, easy to talk to, and just a gem of a doctor, actually, but most importantly, he has longevity of caring for our collective well-being. We are asking tonight that the county council provide enough funding to ensure that we do not lose having our physician on the grounds of a lower contract bid, costs reduced by removing a primary physician. This is not an in-run around the commissioners. We're going to talk to them tomorrow. This is simply, we are kind of collectively frightened about finding new primary providers. I will tell you the story on how we got the clinic. So my husband and I used to work at York Tech in South Carolina, and we had a clinic on site. When our cost was going, running off the rails here at the county, this was like 14, 15 years ago, we told about this clinic, and they looked into it, or getting a similar clinic, and the model just works. And the reason why the model works is longevity with the same provider. And so, so this committee was developed, and instantly, we started not just, not just stopping the ramp up of expenses, but actually decreasing expenses. And so it's been relatively stable, just going up slightly as the years have went on, for 14 years now. It's actually been one of the best things this county has ever done, and I'm not saying that a new provider would not be good, would not be efficient, however, it would not be the doctor that we all know and we love and we appreciate. I was talking to Linda Brady earlier, who said when her son rotated off the county's clinic, that he had to wait a year to find, to get in to see a PCP. Am I saying that right? So, and so it made me think about how, how things changed for me and my family. For those of you who know Dr. LaFollette, Dr. LaClary, when they had IMA, they were the only two providers. One retired, then we got moved to the other one, then he retired, then they hired a young guy, well, he didn't stay a year, then they hired a young female, and she stayed around a year, and they hired another guy that before I even got in to see him, he, he'd already announced he was leaving. So in four years, I went through five physicians and didn't really, and all nice people, but had no longevity, no real health care. This is the first time in my life that I've had the continuity of care and excellent health care. So I'm asking for my department, the people that I represent, to please try to work something out. If it's money, please make it happen, if that's what the commissioners are worried about, and tomorrow we'll talk to them. There, I'm sure there's other issues as well. However, the people here really want to keep Dr. Michov as their doctor, and we want a doctor on site. So unless somebody else has anything to add or ask, that's, that's my plea.
Thank you very much, and I know we've received some calls and inquiries about this, and I've talked to a few elected officials and department heads about it. I was going to ask, Ms. Turner-King, this is not a decision before our body. It's a decision of the commissioners, and I believe they have it on their agenda tomorrow?
Correct. The commissioners are in charge of deciding what vendor to contract with. The council, there is not actually an appropriation for the clinic. The clinic is funded through the self-insurance line and employee health premiums, and just to provide some factual background of how we got to this process, this was not a quick decision, and so what happened was, the county looked at the Everside contract. It's been in place for 12 years, and we realized that it's, because it's over a decade old, it's not reflective of current expectations for clinic and county interaction. So we wanted to update it, and thus that led to an RFP process, which actually began back on February 13th. The commissioners sent out a request for RFPs. There was a deadline for March 13th. In response to the RFP, there were five bids received. Of those five bids, four providers suggested a nurse practitioner model, and they came to that decision based on data that was supplied. They looked at what people were using the clinic for, and four of the five recommended, we just need a nurse practitioner. Then on March 25th, there was a meeting held in this room and on Teams where all five vendors presented publicly their proposed model. There was a second series of meetings with the finalists on April 15th, and all of the meetings were transparent. The selected vendor, which is Proactive, provides care here in the MCCSC clinic and in Tippecanoe County. We reached out as a county to both Tippecanoe County and MCCSC to get feedback on the Proactive. Both provided exceptional feedback and said that their employee satisfaction rate was still the same, and then on May 15th, I believe it was, the recommendation was made at the commissioners' meeting where public comment could have been made, and then it was discussed at the department head meeting on the 16th. It is on the commissioners' agenda for tomorrow, at which time there'll be a representative of Apex present to address any concerns and provide a little bit more detail about the model that we're going to. I think the important thing to note is, even though there'll be one provider, there's not going to be a decrease in hours. So currently, there are three providers, and between the three of them, they work 40 hours a week, and then this one provider will also be providing 40 hours a week. That was a lot, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Just trying to make sure we're understanding everything on this as it is before us. Any questions of these two department, these two elected officials before we release them and their comments? Yes? Counselor Hocken?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware that if a mention is made that has to do with the money, they never came to the county council to say, we would like to have additional money placed in this fund. Oh, my daughter, sorry. So anyway, so my, I just wanted to share with you that indeed, this is not a council decision. We were not contacted or asked for any additional dollars for the fund. And let somebody else can say they were contacted. I wasn't, any more than just what we've shared what the schedule was. And I'm trying to get my daughter off.
Yeah, I think Counselor Wilt has a question for Molly Turner-King.
I just want to be sure that I understood that this contract, and indeed, the whole clinic really, is completely funded by the premiums paid by the employees. Is that correct?
And that self-insurance line. So do you know, like during budget season, when we, there's like $13,500, and we always say, what's that employee contribution? That's what this is. That, that amount funds the clinic.
Ah, so it's, it's what we pay toward that, okay, got it. So it's both?
There's two funding sources, the self-insurance line and then the employee health premiums.
Thank you.
And so, just one final question. If county employees or elected officials, department heads, wish to make comments on this, they could tomorrow at the commissioners' meeting as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the commissioners have that on their agenda to make a determination and decision. Okay, all right. Any other questions? Counselor Hocken?
There was the petition passed, and each of you had a copy of it. I signed it simply, I didn't know exactly where to sign it, so I just signed it on the first page of signatures. I wish to give that to you folks now, so you can see that I signed it. Yes, that's where I, that's the only doctor I have. So yes, I sort of take this personal, but because it concerns me, I know that the employees that use this clinic have got to have the same fear in their head, in their heart. Where are they going to go out there and find a family doctor, right here in the, how many of us are going to go find a family doctor? I was told today by elected official sitting over there that when her family moved here, that they had to wait how long to get a family doctor? How long did you say, Bree?
Four months.
You what? How long did they wait?
Four months.
Wait, wait, four months. And my, my own family member, my brother, said that even when they changed, they had to wait like six months to even get in there. So this is the big deal, and I think there's many people who are concerned about it.
I can see another elected official department hand raised. It's Commissioner Thomas. I'm going to move to her next to move us along, and we'll go to that and then keep on going. Thank you very much for your comments. Commissioner Thomas, welcome.
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm trying to unraise my hand. There, oh, it's still not going. All right. There we go. So thank you all. Yes, we will be talking about this tomorrow. I just also want to obviously invite you, but also the public, to a couple of listening sessions that we're going to have on the North Park property for the possible location of a just complex site. And so we are holding two meetings. Of course, you are all invited. We've also invited Ellisville Town Council and folks who have already written to us via email about, as they've seen information in the media about the fact that we were surveying and looking at this site. So these, both of these meetings will be held at the Ellsfield Fire Station on West State Road 46. The first one is Sunday, June 2nd, at 3:00 p.m., and the second meeting will be Wednesday, June 5th, at 6:00 p.m. So we just wanted to get that invitation out there. We're going to try to get this on Teams as well. We're looking into that, so hopefully we'll have an answer on that soon as well. So just wanted to let you all know and to invite the public to attend that listening session, Warnerburg. Okay? Questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions for Commissioner Thomas? Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner. All right, other department heads or elected officials wishing to make an update, come forward in the Nat U Hill. See Chief Deputy Parker, the commander, Commander Gibbons. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Just going to give you a quick update. As to our staffing, we're still 100% staffed. Outside of the six transition positions, we have hired four. Currently, we have 14 backgrounds out. We just got an influx of three additional applications today. We're working as fast as we can to get those backgrounds done, but as you know, those are essential to getting completed in the right way, so it's taking some time. Just some quick information for the facility. Currently, we have 229 inmates, 201 in our secure bed count. You guys, as you know, 244 is our cap when we start making notifications. Within the, in the last 48 hours, we have 11 bookings. In the last 48 hours, we have six releases. We currently have 187 felony inmates, 24 misdemeanor, which is 187 males, 42 females. Some of the recent charges that we're booking into the facility all have to deal with domestic battery, disorderly conduct, and public intoxication. Those are three different inmates that have come in with kind of the same charges in different portions of the county.
I had to make him come to give that update today. He did not want to come. I told him, hey, the councils are friends. You need to come up here and give an update, so I just wanted, I wanted to let him get away with it. But on the merit side, we're currently in the selection process for the three vacancies that we have. We just completed the interviews just Saturday, as a matter of fact. We completed the written test and the interview, so we're going into the background phase. So we're projecting, you know, filling those vacancies probably in the next six weeks to two months. We have, for those three vacancies, right now, we have four certified police officers that are already Tier One certified. They're going through the process, so that's, that's going to be a big, big help to us if we can latch on to those certified officers. And again, just a note of appreciation, when you're drawing those certified police officers, it tells you that, you know, your benefits and your pay and your structure is working because other people are looking to come here now, and it's, it's paying off dividends for us here in this election process.
Counselors, do you have questions for Chief Deputy Parker or Commander Gibbons? Mr. Iverson?
Just real quick to kind of drive that home, a number of us were at a Memorial Day celebration on Monday yesterday, and one of the road deputies was there, and he was very proud to be there and said, you know, I'd love if my colleagues could be here, but they're out on another event they need to be covering, another, something that's, that's happening, and, and just really drove home the fact that you guys deal with so much in our community, from being there at Memorial Day events to dealing with circumstances beyond any of our control out in the community. So just wanted to highlight that, that's happening.
Yeah, it's a very common occurrence for us, is like, we'll schedule training, or we'll schedule an event for our officers, and inevitably, many percentages of the time, we have to reschedule it because something comes up, can't be there. So it's, it, that's an ever-going thing, but we appreciate that, and we appreciate the opportunity to be at those events when we can be.
Counselor Hocken?
Great. First of all, I'd like for TSD or whoever can do it to turn that light off that's right in my eyes. It's giving me a migraine.
You're in the spotlight.
I mean, it's very.
It's a good time to ask those questions.
It's really. It's awful, and I, and it's hurting Cheryl, too, not just me.
Marty and Cheryl, just complain, complain.
Whatever it is, turn the darn thing off. Anyway, I did have a real question. Do you keep record of how many releases you make per day, and like, could you show us like what your total releases are, when they generally, when the bigger amounts go off so that we could see?
They turned everything off like that?
Over a month or whatever. It's the. It's ridiculous.
It's just that one. Yeah. There you go.
Why don't you get a migraine habit for three days?
I still can't see his faces because.
I know. I'm blinded.
Anyway.
Blinded by the light.
Just so I understand, you're, you want, do you want me to send you a list periodically or send the council?
Well, we're going to be having a meeting over at the Ellsfield Fire Department, having to do with jail location, and I think, and there's been others. Councilmember Iverson had mentioned before that part of the problem that, that has been mentioned is that as they are released, if we end up in that location that's being discussed, how many are being released? Are they all released at the same time? What's the transportation going to be like? And it isn't like just once a week. This is like ongoing.
Right, yeah.
And so, just so that there's a better understanding of that situation, I'd just like to have an idea of how many are released routinely and what we might do about that. That was just something that I thought would be of interest for people to know about.
What you were basically asked for, I mean, we have releases daily, so if we came and said, okay, we release an average of 4.3 inmates per day, or is that what you're looking for? Are you looking for?
Well, yeah, because some days might be 10, some days might, you know, depending on whether or not you just had a weekend or a big event or something of the sort. But yes, I think that has been mentioned, that the transportation. But yes, I think that has been mentioned, that, that the transportation is an important part of the decision-making process. And if they're released, where are they going to go?
I will go back to the office, and I will do two things. I'll get an average per day of releases. And then from January 1st until now, I'll get you a daily population to see kind of what we're looking at, if that works for you.
I mean, do you think that answers the question? Well, they're in deep conversation over there. But I know that there's other people here that have been concerned about where they're going to go, how many are released, and at what time of the day, and, you know, where they, because here, they're released and they can just walk to where their provider is, where their support system is.
I think I know what you're driving at. So we'll, we'll get some release data put together.
Thank you. And thank you, whoever turned off that light. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Chief Deputy Parker or Commander Gibbons? All right. Thank you, as always. We appreciate very much the report and the offer for information. We, we know that you always come through with that. All right. Other department heads or elected officials wishing to offer an update? Come forward to the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right. Going once, twice. We're going to move on then to council liaison updates. Counselors wishing to make a comment? Counselor Iverson?
Let me kick it off with a short one here. The Substance Use Disorder Advisory Commission met on Friday, and we were able to hear reports from our 2024 Educational Summit Subcommittee. So again, this is just a plug for you all to save the date for Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at the Monroe County Convention Center for the 2024 Monroe County Recovery Summit. And we also heard a committee report from our opioid settlement committee. And you're going to see some changes, hopefully, to that, to that committee coming down the pike here.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Iverson. Any other counselors wishing to make a lea? Yes, Counselor McKim?
Thanks. Yes. Counselor Wiltz and I are the appointees to the Public Safety Lit Advisory Committee with the, jointly with the city. And the, the city council attorney is kind of always taking the lead on scheduling those. He would like to schedule the first meeting during the first two weeks of June, and I will be gone out of the country during the first two weeks of June. So I'm looking for a substitute, at least for that meeting, who'd be interested in participating in PS Lit. I know Counselor Munson has served on that committee before, so I don't know if she's willing to be dragooned into that. And there's just one comment I have about it, although usually the first meeting is mainly spent on devising the process for fire departments to apply for, for funding. We want to make sure that, one of the other functions of that committee is to recommend the PSAP Lit percentage, the percentage of public safety that goes, goes to PSAP. And we talked about the supplemental lit distribution in, in the recent past. Well, the PSAP is going to get 850,000, more than $850,000 in supplemental lit, which is quite a windfall. And I think that what that means is that we might be able to use that as an opportunity for at least one, for one year to reduce the rate going to the PSAP so that then both the city and the county are able to gain additional public safety money for other priorities. And yet, the PSAP, fully fund the PSAP. But that's just, that's kind of a side note. What I really need is for somebody to substitute in the first PS Lit committee meeting.
Counselors, let's see if we can't get this taken care of. Raise your hand if you might have an interest in subbing in on PS Lit. I saw Counselor Hawke's handing, heading up.
Well, my daughter's going to be in town, that's why.
If nobody wants to do it, I will do it because.
I might be. I can talk to you offline about it.
So it sounds like we've got some interest from Counselor Munson and Counselor Crossley. Perhaps you have some options there to sub in?
I think, either way, I mean, if.
Take it, take it turns.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Okay. I'm glad that there's, I just wanted to make.
Depending on schedules, we don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
Counselor Hawke?
And I wanted to also comment, having to do with the supplemental, because once, once that's already been set, the budget has been set, according to the interlocal, if you'll look at that interlocal, we don't really send them the supplemental. We, we keep it back into like the holding accounts, sort of like a trust account for them. Because remember, if there's ever a shortfall, then the interlocal says that they pay half the shortfall and we pay half the shortfall. So we want to make sure that those dollars are, are there in a safe amount and that just because more dollars come in with that income tax revenue does not mean it automatically goes over into these budgets. And I see the auditor shaking her headsets. So hopefully, the law has some change on that.
Thank you very much. And thank you, counselors, for working on that. It's a very important committee. I once served on that. And good work happens there. A lot of good memories. All right. Other council liaison updates? Counselor Hawke?
Okay. This might or might not sound like a council liaison update, but because I have the Sheriff's Department on one of the liaisons there, and because, of course, I love the Ellisville area, am I not talking into the? Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Ellisville, going to be at the Ellisville Fire Department. This is not a lot of heads-up time for the public to know this. Now, I did try to notify some people when I got the first email last week. But of course, people are right in the middle of graduation parties and, you know, the Memorial Weekend and so forth. And so they really haven't had a lot of time to get prepared to spend their Sunday at, working around the fire station to see what's happening in their nearby neighborhood. I can remember the time. And then the next one is on a Wednesday. Folks, I can remember in Ellisville, people went to church on Sunday, and that was a day that they did not use for meetings or anything of the sort. And Wednesday night was prayer meeting. You wouldn't have dared to go door-to-door knocking in the Ellisville area on Wednesday nights. And you certainly would not schedule a Sunday meeting at the fire station. So I don't know how many families will give up their family time to do this on Sunday, but this is important. And so I just wanted to share that, that we're trying to get the message out. Rachel McCarty, I sent her the information because she sort of watches over that on Facebook, the high neighbors for Ellisville. And so she got out part of the information. But if you have other information that you want to share, or if you want to go listen to hear what some of the people in the neighborhood want, I hope that, that you'll have time to be there as well. My daughter's going to be in town, but I guess I'll just have to give up time, my rare time that I spend with my daughter and go to this meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Other council liaisons? All right. We're going to move on to our consent agenda items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items for May 28th. The April 9th and April 23rd, 2024 council meeting summary minutes as presented. And the prosecutor's request to add two account lines, 13035 and 13036 APS Investigator to Fund 9112-9624, Adult Protection Service grant.
Second.
Are there any questions from council? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. When I requested copies of the minutes, I was told that they were not ready to be handed out. And they normally don't do that until the Thursday before the meeting. But of course, people weren't around. So I have no idea what those minutes said. And I'll just say that I've not been real pleased with summary minutes because that is someone's objective thought of what is important is being said. I would rather see it be just, this was the motion and this was the vote, and not have someone's personal opinion about what conversation was more important than others. Because twice now, I've been, I've seen things where it was not what I said, or certainly not what was intended. So I would rather just see, plain and simple, here's the motion, and here's how it went.
Counselor Hawke, would it be okay if we removed these minutes from the consent agenda and held them to the next meeting so there'd be time?
That would be lovely. I'd like to read it before I vote on it. I've been passing in the past, but.
Absolutely. So without objection, we'll remove the minutes referenced by Counselor Crossley from the consent agenda. So ordered. All right. Any other comments or questions? So we have a revised consent agenda containing the prosecutor's request to add two account lines, 13035 and 13036 APS Investigator to Fund 9112-9624. All those, yeah, well, actually, let's do a roll call vote.
A public comment.
Public comment on that consent agenda item. If there's members of the public that also have items they wish to offer questions to for us to consider removing those, we will do that. Come forward to the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Thank you, Counselor McKim. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote on the consent agenda item as amended.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay. And those minutes will be held until the next meeting for consideration. All right. That takes us to item number eight, committee appointments.
Counsel, I move to approve the appointment of Jenny Olm Stevens to the Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Committee, completing the remainder of a two-year term that expires on December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right. And with that, we're going to recognize Counselor Munson.
I'm happy to say that we had two qualified candidates to serve on this committee, and we could only take one. But we have one in, in waiting anyway for when the next opening comes, which will be in January. So congratulations to Jenny Olm Stevens for getting the unanimous support of the committee that I offered to you all.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor Munson. Questions, comments from counselors? Counselor Wiltz?
I just wanted to say that I happened to see Ms. Stevens not too long ago, and she expressed a lot of excitement about joining the committee. And it was really nice to kind of hear that just on the street.
So I'll say that this is the best committee in all, all of local government.
Questions or comments? I, I do want to add to what Counselor Wiltz and Counselor Munson said, the work of the committee, it is good to see someone that's been very involved in our civic system find an avenue here and put that good service to work because we know Counselor Munson will put her to work. And we appreciate that very much. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none? Let's see if the public has any comments.
Usually, we don't do a public comment on citizen appointee.
Let's not do it then. Let's skip that part, and let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Counselor McKim, for catching me. Item number nine, soil and water job description, an item tabled from our last meeting.
Counsel, I move to approve the forwarding job, counsel, excuse me. I moved to, I move to approve forwarding the job descriptions of the Conservation Resource Specialist and Soil and Water Conservation, Conservation Manager to Wagner, Irwin, and Schill for review and classification.
Second.
Thank you very much. Counselor Iverson, you did some work on this in the meeting.
Well, I raised a stink last time. I think that's what you mean. So I, I, I raised a stink about this job description and said that we'd have it ready by this meeting. We had a good conversation, I thought, about how to reduce silos and ensure that collaboration's happening around issues like conservation and climate resilience. And that's what we have before us today. I will point out to council on your screen here, on the bottom on page 35, we're looking for the yellow highlighted section. There it is. We made the following two changes. In the top paragraph or sentence, we added language about providing preferred responses to the issue as it regards collecting data and compiling reports. And then the second addition was that, that this position should participate in county climate resilience initiatives. So that ensures that they're sitting on other boards and other workshops and things like that.
Questions or comments from counselors? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. I noticed when I was going over the job description that a lot of changes were being made, if they're still in there, if that change is still there, where it was pulling it out of, working with the stormwater folks and just saying, all departments. And I'm wondering, does that mean that then Stormwater needs to pick up and hire someone to do whatever this person was supposed to be doing? I mean.
If I could speak to that, one of the, the conversations that we had was with Lisa Ridge, our highway director, who spoke to this very issue, and can't get the microphone right, about how a lot of onus is being placed on some of her employees to do work outside of their job description. And this type of collaboration would help ensure that folks are going to be able to focus on what their job description is highlighting. And I'll also point out that it's not just Stormwater, MS4 Coordinator, or our highway folks, it's also folks in our planning department, emergency management, the commissioner's office, the council. There's a lot of departments that are touching on these issues. There's some committees and boards touching on these issues. So we try to take out as much language as possible, narrowing in what this person's doing, instead trying to broaden it out so they could work with the entire county.
So the answer is, it is not, it's not going to require more dollars for Stormwater to do whatever this position was going to do.
Is this councilman's opinion? And this councilman's opinion alone, at this point, I don't see that.
All right. Other questions or comments?
At the, I do have another comment. At the last meeting, when we discussed this, it was mentioned that, for whatever reason, it was already budgeted in the commissioner's budget. And we've had recognized that hopefully they're not moving those dollars around because you wouldn't budget for a position that is already being paid for with a grant, and the county's not receiving any dollars from that grant. That grant's staying separate and will until the grant runs out. It's not a reimbursable grant, so it's different. So I would just want to make sure that we all agree that the commissioner should not be spending down that money in that line item for anything else. Is that?
Yeah. Grant first.
Well, the grant, the grant is not even our grant. It doesn't belong to the county. The grant is over in the Soil and Water, and, and it's not reimbursed. This person's not a county employee in any shape or form. It's just a grant outside of the county. And so what we are deciding now is whether or not we want to bring it into the county. And that won't even have, and once we make that decision, then we won't even, it won't be effective until the beginning of the year when the, when the grant has run out. Is that as you understand it? We wouldn't, we wouldn't pay for it to people.
That's certainly the way. I understand it. I, I would expect that money to revert this year and for it to be in the budget next year.
And any of the benefits or anything that would have been tied to that line item should be also reverting back because it should never have been in there.
Seeing a lot of nodding heads here and in the back as well from our, our board of supervisors in Soil and Water. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Wiltz?
Well, I, I just wanted to say to Counselor Hawke's first question, that the needs of Stormwater.
Stormwater should be, you know, addressed separately. If Stormwater has needs for their department and whatever projects they're working on, that is legitimate and valuable, and we should consider those things. This position, you know, is supportive of Stormwater projects but has its own entity, its own life.
May I reply? Okay. The reason why I mention that is because when we send something to WIS, if it looks like as if we're removing some duties from one area and putting it in another area, we're supposed to recognize that and change it. It's just a part of what PAC does. So that was my reason for asking the question.
And in this case, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, this is us saying, on behalf of PAC, we're sending this to WIS, so we're doing PAC's kind of duty here, sending this off to WIS. That will then come back, right?
And it does not necessarily mean that we are already voting to fund it. It means we're going to get the classification back, and we'll consider it during the budget session because it will be, the salary will then go into the budget for the beginning of next year.
Your memory serves you correctly. PAC looked at this issue. There were issues that we thought the whole council could talk about. That's when we talked about it. I raised my stink, and then here we are.
All right. So on the underlying motion, any other comments? Let's go to public comment on this. If you have comments on this particular item on the agenda, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams, and we will call on you. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote. You have a question? We'll go right ahead. That's what this is for.
I just want to ensure, because this has been such a long journey, that the commissioner's office is still supportive of the job descriptions as they are now with these corrections or additions or changes that you made just in the last week. I just want to make publicly certain that that is what's going on.
As much as I would like to speak for the commissioner's office, I cannot give you that assurance.
I will say, I did not see the signature on the line that, as part of this document, where if someone, where the signature of the supervisor is supposed to be, I didn't see a signature.
Can we just get the commissioner's concurrence and then send it off without coming back for another vote?
Yeah, let's just do...
We certainly can. It's just been a long series of back and forth. I was hopeful that that wouldn't be necessary, I guess.
Ms. Turner King?
I'm happy to take it to the work session tomorrow if you'd like.
Yes. That'd be awesome, and that's right tomorrow.
Ms. President, the other thing I would hope is that people would not start out, if they've got a three-year grant, and start out at the very first meeting of the very first year, start spending staff time and everybody's time and back and forth trying to get it as the permanent employee. We've got too many grants going on to do this. We just, now is the time for them to be adjusting and seeing if they can get it in the budget for next year. Whatever happened before was a whole lot of waste and a whole lot of staff time.
All right. So we're, Counselor McKim?
I just want to, I look forward to voting for including this position in the budget. I feel like they have spent so much time and effort laying the ground, making sure that we understand the scope of the position, justifying the position, letting us know years in advance. I feel like they've been the model of a department that is looking for a new staff member.
100%.
So...
I want to make a comment that I do not want this to be a model because it took so much time and effort by so many people. This, I thought, was just inefficient use of so many people's energy.
I'm just saying, they laid the ground for a long time before and made it clear that we understood what the scope of the position was.
Through no fault of their own, was it a long, drawn-out, arduous process?
It was our issue.
It was on this side.
Call the question.
Considerable, and I'll just make a final comment here. Considerable, nice try, Peter. Considerable number of liaisons have worked on this, considerable number of council presidents, I believe. This is going on three. This has been some time, so we've been pretty flexible to hopefully get this done. Here we go. Roll call vote?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, for sending it off to WIS, but I'm not guaranteeing I'd vote for it during the budget.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. And thank you for being here again tonight. All right. Let's go to item number 10, Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee. We will now have our quarterly update to the counselor, counsel, pardon me, Counselor Iverson. Would you please kick us off?
Yes, thank you so much, President Deckard. The Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee does indeed need to make a quarterly report, and we are going to do that here. I will direct your attention to the screen for a series of very short slides. But first, as a reminder of why we're even doing this, I'm going to kick it over to Council Member Crossley, who serves on the JFAC.
Thank you. Not to go down the proverbial acronymic meetings that we have here in the county, to take us down a memory lane. The reason why Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee, also known as JFAC, was created is simply because the other acronym meeting, CJRC, Criminal Justice Advisor, oh, the CJRC was halted. And we had community members and lots of folks here that were really kind of upset and really wanted the work to continue, to keep going and to keep moving. So out of the mouths of us here on the council and standing in our proverbial lane of being the fiscal body, we decided that we were going to do something about that, thus creating JFAC. So that one was created last year. We wanted to continue to have that. And again, some of the membership that was on there were some of the voices that were not able to be a part of one of the other ones, which was those that had lived experience through incarceration and some of the city administration as well. So we appreciated all members that were a part of that. And then, of course, we had those meetings, and then we concluded back in September of last year, just right before budget. And we promised counsel that we would continue to do our job and to bring updates, which is what we are doing right now.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor, thank you, Jen, Councilmember Crossley. Ms. Moser, can we advance to the first slide, please? So we've asked members of our sheriff's department to come forward and present this first update on personnel, which covers recommendations 10, 26, and 27 of the JFAC report.
Okay. The first part there is the transition team. As you know, Corey Grass holds that position here and has been very, very, very active. If you don't believe me, ask him, and he'll talk to you about two hours and tell you about it. So he's, he has, he's been to very various places, looked at a lot of different facilities. He's looked at different items of equipment that may be in there. I know, for example, they went down and looked at, you know, a place that makes furniture for the facility, jail doors for the facility. They're going to, I've been to several facilities and going to several more. The transition office is up and running in the showers building. It's fully equipped, fully furnished. We look to have Kyle update you on the position. We've got four of those backfields already hired. We look to have all of those done and those individuals trained up by the end of June, and that's about the time we anticipate the timing of them being activated. Maybe not all at once, but going over there to start working on the transition team. So I think our timing was pretty good. We got out in front of it. We've got them hired. The backgrounds have been done, that we trained up. They have their jail school here in June. So we should be able to meet those deadlines pretty nicely. Any questions on the transition team part of that? Okay. On the advanced correctional, moving at lightning speed on that, I'm happy to say, the discharge planner has been hired. She will begin on June 3. Her name is Samantha Ball, and she has, she was a corrections officer for us. Her father is one of the qualified mental health professionals we have there. So she has education in that arena, so she's going to take over as the discharge planner, which I think is going to be very, very helpful with us because Samantha knows the entire process of that jail, so nothing's going to be new to her. So we're really excited that we were able to transition, you know, someone with that much of in-depth knowledge in the facility to that position. Now, we did leave a vacancy, but we've already filled that, so we're okay. We hated to lose her as a corrections officer, but I think she's going to be very successful in that position. The qualified mental health professional begins June 11. That person's name is Evan Lineham, and he begins there, like I said, June 11. There were interviews for that position, and our staff sat in on those. They feel very, very comfortable that this individual's going to be a really nice fit there in the facility as the third mental health professional. The substance abuse counselor, they have an applicant that they're working through the background phase on, looking possibly the end of June to fill that position. But just a few things here that I want to point out to the council and anybody who's listening here of how important that this really is. We talked with our mental health professionals today, the two that we have, I'll be, of course, upping that to three. Right now, in our facility of 235 people, we have 51 people that they would classify as severely mentally ill. So if you remember, I have given this update numerous times, and that's always fluctuated between, you know, 17 to 25% in that arena, and here we sit today at, you know, about 22%. But 51 people that are severely mentally ill, that's no small issue in a correctional facility. So that third individual is going to be incredibly helpful to us. On the substance abuse part of it, and I want to put this into context, if you think about the number I'm about to give you and realize that we have had no one in this field in our facility helping with this issue, they estimate about 85% of our jail population has a substance abuse issue problem. So heretofore, that portion of our facility has been, quite frankly, ignored. It's just been a problem that we knew existed, but we haven't provided any treatment towards it or any solution towards it. And if you don't do that, I don't know how you can expect your recidivism rate to decrease. If you're not addressing the problems when you have them there. So I really think that of all the things that the council, the sheriff, and the commissioners worked through to get to this point, that substance abuse counselor is going to be a real key thing for us to watch and set some, hopefully gather some data on so we can see how that is helping us in our facility. The third stat I want to give you, and it really, it kind of folds into the medical care at whole because we're going to be talking about how we're going to design this facility in depth over the coming months. You know, we've got these meetings coming up, and I'm sure it's going to be an issue. But 219 out of 235 individuals in our facility are actively engaged in some type of medical care. 219 out of 235. That's how many that ACH cares for every day in our facility. The last thing I want to address is, and this may not be a real popular thing for me to, but as we have talked about adding these positions, there seems to be some concern about particularly like the discharge planner. Well, is that going to displace what we're doing? Is that going to affect, you know, we have people coming into our facility, providing different services? I want to make sure everybody understands what that discharge planner is designed to do is help coordinate with all of those individuals coming in. It's not a replacement. It's certainly not to push anybody out because what we have coming into our facility is very, very helpful to us, and we want to continue that. But what we didn't have is a singular person that could focus on this and work individually with those residents that need that services, that are getting ready to leave our facility. We had staff members that in, if they had an extra five minutes, would talk with someone. We have a liaison that's picked up some of that. So all it's going to do is streamline and make that much, much more effective. So, you know, I just want to alleviate any concern that this is not something to displace any of the services that, you know, our volunteers are providing for us because they're very valued. It's going to be that person that makes it all click together, if that makes sense.
Can I ask you a quick question on that? So that person would literally say, Trent is leaving two days from now. Trent needs this, this, this. We've maybe talked to Trent. Here's a plan.
Trent has this issue. Trent has diabetes, you know. Trent has different things. Trent needs housing. Trent needs whatever. And yeah, that person's going to be reaching out to try to find those resources through our other providers and through our other volunteers to help him access those services. You're exactly right. I didn't mean to give you a whole bunch of issues there, Trent.
Got close on that.
Thank you for that update. And for those of you who watch Substance Abuse Disorder Advisory Commission meetings, you know this is talked about a lot. Your question was echoed. So there's a lot of interest here, and thank you for your explanation. In fact, I think that bleeds, it goes nicely into the next slide here, which, there's only four slides. But I did want to update folks that on May 2 of this year, a meeting was held with representatives of the county council, board of commissioners, county maintenance, the sheriff's office, our courts, the prosecutor's office, public defender's office, the clerk of courts. And the meeting was hosted by DLZ, the architectural firm contracted by the board of commissioners. They talked about the pre-design phase, specifically programming, not site-specific, the conceptual design and master planning, and that that's the process they're in right now. For this council, the most important thing that we're looking for is that square footage because that's going to help us estimate the cost of this project. Furthermore, we're excited to talk about the construction manager, WAG, had been recommended to the board of commissioners. So we're moving forward on that part as well. So you think about how we have an architect, and now a construction manager has been recommended to the BOC. And then the departments were talked to at this meeting in a courthouse about completing a worksheet detailing their space needs. They're encouraged to think about not what your space needs are right now, but what your space needs are going to be in 10, 20 years. And so that's what's going on right now, is that DLZ is in the process of going over those worksheets and talking with the different departments and indeed touring those spaces to get a good handle on them. Another meeting of this full group is expected to be held once the preliminary space needs have been detailed. And this is all moving us towards that architectural sketch of a justice complex, and we're just in this space now where we're trying to figure out which departments need what space. So look for an invitation for a meeting from DLZ into your inbox. And those were JFAC recommendations 30, 31, and 32 as we move forward with those recommendations. All right, let's look at our last slide. And Councilmember Wiltz is going to cover these for us.
Yes, indeed. So this last slide refers to JFAC recommendations number seven and eight and really updates us on things that are going outside of the jail itself. us on things that are going outside of the jail itself. Number seven was to engage in a formal mapping process of the sequential intercept model. And that is going to be taking place next year. A formal request has been made with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and they will be working with our county to help us identify the gaps in our community that need services and how we can best fill those. And the other recommendation, which was number eight, was to fund the promotion and ensure funding continues for local crisis services. And a really exciting update is that mobile crisis teams and the Stride Center are currently fully funded and operational and available to our community whenever help is needed. And to that end, I just wanted to provide the go-to phone number right now. 988 is, of course, always an option and is being promoted across the country, really, as a mental health crisis line. However, the Stride Center is our community's first go-to resource for mental health crisis, and they have a direct number to get you directly to people in our community and are encouraging folks to put that number in their phones, which I did. And I'm going to read it to you right now in case anyone would like to do the same. And that's the Stride Center and connects you with immediate crisis assistance for anything that does not need a law enforcement response, which is quite a bit.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Wiltz, for that update. That concludes this JFAK update. If you want to know more about JFAK, you can go to the website on your screen. Thanks, as always, to our council staff, particularly Ms. Mosier, for putting all of this together and tracking the steps that we need to take. And to the members of the public, if you did not hear us talk about an issue that you care about as it pertains to justice reform inside Monroe County, let us know. We're more than happy to start working on those other issues that we're going to be bringing forward in subsequent updates.
Thank you very much, Councilor Iverson, and thanks for your leadership. It's amazing to watch this process kind of get laid out the way that you did that today, and I think this is helpful not only for us but for the public. So thanks from all of us on that. Let's move on to item 11 on our agenda, prosecutor's office request.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for the creation of a new account line 41104, vehicle purchase, and fund 9159-0000, high-tech crime unit, and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $52,000 in the capital category.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And I see Erica Oliphant, Monroe County Prosecutor, with us. Ms. Oliphant.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. Unfortunately, the director of the high-tech crime unit, Levi Minnick, I waved him off because he has a separated shoulder, so he's recovering from that injury. But as you may recall, we received grant funding from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council back in 2022 to establish and maintain a high-tech crime unit, basically to process digital evidence, so cell phones, computers, sometimes even smartwatches and things like that. We started that at the Indiana University Police Department. However, we're in a period of transition. We are moving our unit from Indiana University Police Department to the Ellisville Police Department effective July 1st. And so this request is for a vehicle. We do serve 11 counties in our region of Indiana, and so we're hoping the director can have a vehicle that he can drive around as he collects evidence and helps to advise on the collection of evidence. He also does education for law enforcement prosecutors, and he also testifies in trial as is necessary, although the nice thing about a lot of this digital evidence is it actually prevents a lot of litigation because it's very good evidence either for conviction or for exoneration, frankly. So we did research several options, and an outright purchase of this vehicle seemed like the most cost-effective thing. So we're just asking for an appropriation of grant funds that we already have. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for the prosecutor? Councilor Hawke.
Yes, I believe this is a part, when I was researching some of the documents earlier, is this the vehicle that's being purchased from some other county, some other, I mean, what? I'm just trying to see why we aren't trying to work with local providers.
You know, frankly, this was something that was researched by Ellisville Police Department and Director Levi Minnick, and I think that we did look into the options that Ellisville Police Department uses, as well as maybe trying to get something outside of what Ellisville Police Department uses, and we just felt like this was going to be the most cost-effective option. You know, I'm hopeful that we can save money. Like I said, we have the funds still remaining, actually, from our previous year's budget, so this isn't even cutting into our 2024 budget at this point. But this was through our research, this just seemed like the best option for us.
Other questions? Council Wiltz.
Yeah, my question's a little tangential, but I, surprise. This high-tech crimes unit is the same unit that looked at the evidence from the IU campus protests? Is that true?
No, that's incorrect. So actually, my office reviews the evidence, and that's in the form of body worn cameras and photographs that we receive from the police agencies involved. So the Indiana State Police and the Indiana University Police Department. So no, the high-tech crime unit has, it typically works on the investigation side of cases rather than the prosecution, like review side. And so they've investigated, so far, about 276 cases have been submitted to the high-tech crime unit that we started back in 2022. 511 items have been submitted. We've served 11 counties. A lot of those offenses have been high-level felonies. Because we have limited resources, we have a triage system, a priority system of cases, and so it's been everything from homicides, child exploitation, child pornography, and sometimes some dealing resulting in death and those kinds of things, but it's a wide variety of crimes. But no, they didn't have anything to do with the recent protest matter.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, let's see if the public has some comments. If so, come forward in the Nat U Hill room here, or raise your hand on Teams. All right. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Let's move on to item number 12, a request from the Jail Correctional Center.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1,000-0380, general fund jail of $184,352 in the personnel category.
Second.
And this is, as I recall, the second half of some action we had taken in the last meeting. Want to welcome Commander Gibbons. I also want to welcome Mr. Miller to join us here.
Good evening. Yes, as you mentioned, this is the second portion of this discussion on 514 meeting. You all approved the addition of these four positions. Now, this would be the subsequent request for the additional appropriation for these positions.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from councilors? Counselor McKim.
So just based on what you've seen before, when might you think you'd have these positions filled?
I think, I think within the, I don't want to give you a definitive time, but I think within the next couple of weeks, we should be, background checks completed, uniforms issued, training started, so we're pretty close. We're pretty close.
Thank you.
I had kind of a follow-up question. Do you see on applications just kind of a small, steady stream of them coming in over time, or is it kind of stops and starts, or what's that like?
It's been pretty steady of late. Just like the chief deputy mentioned earlier, you guys have helped create a significant package on people coming in or transitioning from other departments. We've seen with how we've hired and how we've moved people through training, we've seen an extra interest in making it a career rather than just a job. So that's been really easy to train, because once you establish a foundation, you build from that, and keeping those people, retaining those people has been incredibly beneficial.
Other questions, comments from council? All right. So we'll go now to comments from the public. If you have comments, come forward to the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number 13, a request from the sheriff's office.
Okay, and it looks like we will be combining 13A and 13B. Counsel, I'm combining 13A and 13B into one motion. I approve the deappropriation and funds 1,000-0005, general fund sheriff, account line 17101, overtime, and the amount of $4,493.06, and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation and fund 8103-0000, operation pullover, and account line 17101, overtime, and the amount of $4,000, what is that? Oh, $4,493.06.
Second.
Chief Deputy Parker, good to have you back.
I keep leaving and coming back.
Turn off.
This is Jamie. She's our office administrator, so she's going to kind of run you through this on all of these remaining items on the agenda, so we'll just turn it over to her and let her give you the explanations.
So for the deappropriation of the funds, it's just, we pay for the TRP funds, the overtime fund out of the general fund first, and then we're reimbursed. It's a grant. And then we just want to reappropriate it back into the OPO fund. We have to do that quarterly, so you'll be seeing us frequently.
All right. Thank you very much, and welcome. Questions, comments from council? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, first of all, it's nice seeing you here, and I'd like to remind you that when you speak, try to speak into the mic so we can all hear you. You might want to pull it up a little closer to you next time.
Thank you.
Right. Well, I was reading what you were saying, but it would help. Anyway, welcome.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go to comments from the public. If you have them, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item C on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request and fund 1,000-0005, general fund sheriff, to move the following account line positions from 35 to 40 hours, 15161, 15162, 15163, 15166, 15167, and 15181, administrative coordinators with an effective date of 5/19/2024. The sheriff is also requesting to combine two part-time positions and create an additional administrative coordinator position, account line 15159, 40 hours, COMC, not exempt, also with an effective date of 5/19/2024.
Second.
Okay. Chief Deputy Parker.
Okay, we have a, we have a very, very busy front office up there. I can't tell you, when I go up there to the front offices, rarely do I see that lobby empty. There's usually someone up there needing some type of a service, and it ranges, it runs the gamut. So we have a combination of folks that are on 40-hour, we have some that are on 35-hour. And to keep that running smoothly, it's very difficult with the volume of traffic that's coming in, to have some of those folks, you know, scheduling these lunch hours and trying to keep those services going. So it's designed to, one, improve service to the community, and, two, provide for more consistency in the office, and then to cut down on the overtime hours that were working because of the 35-hour versus the 40. And Jamie's got more statistics for you and more information, but that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it, so I didn't know how in-depth we want us to get. I guess we'll just kind of wait and see if you have questions about it, and hopefully we can respond to your questions.
Okay. All right, I'm going to turn it to councilors for questions and/or comments. Counselor Munson.
Hi there. I'm curious to know what proportion of your staff is, administrative staff are 35-hours and what proportion 40, right now?
Right now, currently, there are five of them that are in the 40-hour position and six of them that are in the 35-hour position.
And so it's, and so you're moving the six, 35ers to 40?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor McKim.
I think everybody knows how I feel about the, about 35-hour position, so this is not a hard sell for me. I'm glad to move them to 40.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I concur with Councilmember McKim. I do, however, think that we need to keep track of, remember, I said this at the last meeting, I believe, once I discussed it, that as we continue to add this year, it's really pulling out of what we could grow the following year for. So we need to, the auditor's office or our staff or someone should have a routine, this is where you are now, this is what you have done in addition to what you started out with, a dollar amount for the different departments. That should be something that could be readily available, assign that to someone, someone needs to be doing it, whether it be the council office or the auditor's office, so that we'll know where we stand, where, how much we've spent into the.
I thought McKim had already started working on it. She may not be finished, but I know she was working on that report.
Who had been? Kim.
Counsel Wiltz.
Actually, I believe it was you, Courtney, wasn't it, who worked on the fiscal impact?
Yes, I did the fiscal impact for these positions and emailed it to you guys this afternoon.
And one of the issues, as I understand it, is that the information that our office can obtain about overtime is limited, because our reports only show if someone peaks above 30 accumulated hours of overtime?
The second report that was provided is a comp time report, not an overtime report.
Yes, sorry.
And so that report, it doesn't really measure if an employee is consistently working over 35. over 35 or 40 hours, because the report reflects individuals or employees within the county that are holding more than 30 or 40 comp hours. So, if you're holding less than 30, you're not on the report. If you're earning them as soon as you... Or using them as soon as you earn them, you're not on the report. And so, it's not really a good tool to see if employees are consistently working. When speaking to employee services, what they recommend as the best tool to see if employees are working consistently more than their allotted hours would be just auditing timesheets, which they haven't had time to do before today's meeting.
I do think that information is important, and... Because I do... I generally agree, if we can get people at 40 hours and they... And that's what folks want to be working, that's what a full-time job is, and I think being consistent across county government is beneficial. That's weighed against this fear I have of how much we've added and how much we keep adding into the budget, and are we going to be able to sustain not only the new positions that we've added, but now also kind of making these changes within the department and/or the office? I would prefer waiting until I could see the fiscal impact of comp time or overtime on kind of that regular basis. Like, how much are folks needed and working over their 35? And how regularly is that happening? What is that fiscal impact on us currently versus what's going... You know, the increase of 40 hours? And, you know, to me, looking at that, if they're consistently working up to 40 but not 50, you know, and then we can really start to compare a little bit better. That's my thought on it.
The one thing I would say to that is I understand the data that you're looking for, but I would tell you that it may be a little misleading because what we try to do there is manage that too.
Yeah.
So, that those employees aren't building up that comp time and aren't working over. So, you know, there's... We create some office deficiencies by managing that, by saying, "Okay, we're going to limit this," and then you rotate people. For example, you know, people coming in early or staying late, we will... May have two employees covering that instead of one because we're going to send someone home early, because we don't want them building up vast amounts of comp time, because that eats itself. Someone builds up comp time, then they got to take it off, then someone else has to come in and replace them, then they build up comp time. So, it... You know, we've tried to manage that. I don't have those exact numbers for you, and I understand why you want to see the data, but I will tell you that I don't know if it's a really good statistic to just rely upon and go, "Okay, they don't have a whole lot of comp time here, so I don't see what the issue is."
Right. I think maybe it's a piece of the puzzle that I would feel more comfortable if I had, you know, because creating an efficiency, from your perspective, is about quality of office culture as much as it is about the budget, and I appreciate that, but it's the budget part that I would like to see more efficient.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes. And part of the reports that I've received, and I think you would too, but it might just be the Internal Control Committee, which I'm not even on, but I still get that information. But at any rate, it shows in the different departments how much comp time is built up, and then occasionally you'll see where the department paid it out. So, it'll show them building it up, then it'll show them taking time off and taking it off, but they'll also show some lines where they just paid them and brought it down to the number they're trying to reach. And so, I'm not sure whether we're tracking how... What departments are, you know, taking dollars and paying them for that overtime? Maybe that's part of some kind of a rule.
Truly, what we're most interested in, I think, is on a week-to-week basis or pay-period-to-pay-period basis, how much is being earned?
Right. And it shows on that.
Yeah. But I don't... Yeah, but we don't have that, and I would like to move to table this to our next meeting. So, that's what I'm doing, whatever that date is. What's our...
I will tell you that Jamie submitted those hours in with this request. I don't know where they... Where they're at. I don't know. Did it come with the packet?
I don't remember seeing those, so I don't think so, but I can look.
And...
And the information we did get came today.
Yeah.
So, we haven't had a lot of time with it.
So, do you have a motion to table? Do we have a second on that motion? I will... Yeah?
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Go to comments on the motion to table. I will generally offer this. I always want councilors to get more information rather than less as we make decisions, and we've worked hard to accommodate that, and I always want us to be right on these things as much as we can be to make those informed decisions. So, I always am going to appreciate when a counselor asks for that, and we have a minute to do it. Other comments on the tabling motion? All right. Let's go to... No public comment on table. Right. Let's go to a roll call vote on the tabling motion.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Peter?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Amendment passes unanimously.
Okay. So, we've got this tabled. We will gather a little bit more information here. Counselor Wiltz, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would just like to make sure that our office is working with the employee services office and your office, the sheriff's office, because I recognize that this can be a lot to put on any one administrator. So, I'd like to just make sure that there's some cooperation and people are able to maybe divvy up what needs to be tabulated as much as possible.
Yeah, I think what you're finding, just scanning this, you're going to see that most of those employees on a bi-weekly basis are working over, but they're probably not up... They're probably in the... Close to the 40-hour range, but, you know, not up into the 50-range. And, you know, I'm looking at, you know, 77 here, 74, 80, 72 one employees. So, almost everybody on here, I think when you see this, you're probably a lot more comfortable that they're probably hitting that, on average, 40 hours a week anyway. It's just about everybody there has some. Like I said, we've managed it as much as we can, but you'll see... You'll see several people hitting, you know, 80-plus. You know, here's one with... You know, a couple 86s in a pay period. So, I think it'll help, you know, once you see this.
Great.
Yeah, I just also want to mention while we're talking about the more information we're getting, I want to thank Ms. Mose here for doing the fiscal impact statement here and putting this together for us as well. All right. So, that motion is... Or that item is tabled. Let's move on to C... No, pardon me, D in our request from the sheriff.
Council, I move to approve the sheriff's request and fund 1,000-0005, general fund sheriff, to move up following account line positions from 35 to 40 hours, 15110 and 151120, civil process server with an effective date of 5/19/2024.
Second.
Chief Deputy Parker?
Basically, the same thing here, although these are folks that are out in the field that do all the civil process over the court, which is pretty voluminous in this county. Those folks are working some overtime. Part of the problem here, too, is we had a vacancy here, and we were having some difficulty getting applicants for that position. Now, and to be fully transparent here, we have... We have received some applications now, and we're going forward with the interview process. I think it may be tomorrow, isn't it? The interviews are tomorrow for that position. So, we were able to get some applicants, not a whole lot, but hopefully we'll pull somebody out of that. But basically, it's the same thing we talked about. So, you know, I anticipate this one may be taken the same route, and we'll be happy to provide that.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. So, would this position be in a situation where if they see an opening that they can maybe get the kind of training to go in as... For a merit deputy, and so, they would do that because they had more hours, or...
This position has not typically lent itself to someone aspiring to be a merit deputy that's come out of the jail side more than it has this. One of the individuals we have there, believe it or not, is a retired airline pilot, for crying out loud, but they do have police authority. They are armed. They go through a little bit more training than, obviously, you know, the jail staff as far as law enforcement goes, because they are armed, and, you know, they're required to provide police services at, you know, sometimes and augment the deputies out there. So, this one's a little bit... This one's a little bit different than the office staff, because these are actually police authority field positions.
I'd like to move that we tabled this as well, just to keep things on par.
Got a motion and a second. Ms. Turner King?
Clarification is your motion to table it to the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to table to the next meeting. Any council comments on that? Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. I think that's the last of the items for you, chief deputy. Thank you again for being here through several items, and thank you also for joining. It's good to have you.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks. All right. Let's go to item 14 on our agenda, a request from the highway department.
All right. I am going to go ahead and combine items 14, A, B, C, and D, and also E, into one motion. I approve the highways... I move to approve the highways' request to deappropriate the following. A, fund 8161-0000, sample road phase one, and the amount of $288,270.30 in the services category. Fund 8162-0000, sample road phase two, and the amount of $231,141.20 in the services category. Fund 8163-0000, Hunter's Creek Road, phase two and three, and the amount of $327,049.62 in the services category. Fund 8171-0000, bicentennial pathway, and the amount of $10,509.62 in the services category. And, fund 8172-0000, Liberty Drive to Cars Trail, and the amount of $2,055,555.20 in the services category.
Second.
All right. Ms. Lisa Ridge, welcome.
It's pretty self-explanatory. So, if you have any questions, we're just trying to zero these out because the projects will be close... They're completed. We have to wait for NDOT to do their paperwork, and that can take a while. So, yeah, if you have any questions.
Questions from council? You have one?
I just assumed that Jeff was going to ask for an update on things.
Actually, I was just really appreciating all the progress on Fullerton Pike. That's looking... Suddenly, there's a lot of action there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's moving along. We have our hurdles. We meet every two weeks on the projects that are going on right now, the Fullerton Pike Phase III, the Vernal Pike Connector, Sunrise Greetings, and then the Cars Trail Extension.
Other questions or comments from council?
I know she probably thinks I have more questions, but I call her every day saying, "Well, what about this and what about that?" And I appreciate that you always take my call and so that I can help the people who think that I know everything, and I tell them, "No, it's Lisa that knows everything." Thank you.
Before going brag, I will add this. There was a night I was out doing some things, and somebody texted me about a tree down over a road at an ungodly hour, and I texted Lisa...
It was a Sunday night?
It was a Sunday night, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I texted Lisa Ridge, who was like, "We already have someone on there," and it responded in 12 seconds. It amazed the people I was with so much that they... I think they wanted my autograph and hers, too. And that's good public service, and we appreciate you so much. Your patience through all of our meetings, too. Any other questions, comments, or praise for Lisa Ridge?
Praise.
All right. Seeing none, let's go to comments from the public on this several combined item. If you have any, come forward here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Councilors, before we move to item F, I want to know, as soon as we're done with Ms. Ridge, I'm going to give us a stretch period so councilors can run to restroom, take a break to grab something, and then we'll come back together. We'll do about seven minutes on that, and let's try to keep to it if we can. All right, item F.
Council, I move to approve the highways' request of a fund to fund transfer of cash from fund 8164-0000, Curry, Woodard, Smith, and the amount of $36,148.22 to fund 4920-0000, Westside Tiff.
Second.
Ms. Ridge?
We're just sending back the cash to the original fund that it came out of due to the project completion on that one.
Questions, comments for Lisa Ridge? All right. Let's go to comments from the public. If you have one, come forward here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ridge. We're going to take a recess about seven minutes, councilors, and we'll come back together at 6:52, let's say 7 o'clock, and we will be back together.
Way to go, President.
Don't say that yet.
Someone will go, "This speech will repeat today."
We do have our... The sheriff's.
I have something for you, but it hasn't come in yet, and when it does, it will be funny.
Just the idea of that.
That was the whole thing in the text message, remember? I was doing what? You know, we have some big... Say that very loosely. Yeah. But, yeah, I think that was the biggest thing, because I was personally saying we should have it, but I don't want to mess up something where... But I don't wanna mess up something where-
I have it here too.
It just sucks that we have to do stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause-
Yeah.
It challenges us.
Am I not allowed to say anything?
No, no, I think we can. And I think I'm gonna try to figure out how to say things where I don't know if you on the mic. 'Cause, you know, it's not okay. I mean-
I recorded four videos for social media and deleted all of them.
Except therapy.
I gotta figure out how to- Yeah, I've had all the scenarios played out in my head. So, I just, I don't. That's all I can say.
I think Jen has talked to all of us.
Who's she talked to?
Therapy session.
I've been out of town and that was her anniversary.
Her wedding anniversary?
Yep, and she got rained. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's gross.
Oh, you know, just passing all the grossness. Who are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did it collaboratively, three of us talked.
And the sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office.
Oh, that's right, we should do like commissioners matching t-shirts or like matching hoodies.
JSA.
Oh, yeah.
Or stay in your lane. Every time you say that, I crack up.
I just have to. And I've said it in a meeting with her.
I saw that. That was good.
Wait, what?
It was pretty funny.
I do. Did I miss something? Oh, you know what? I did see that and I cackled in my head. I did. I remember that. I totally spaced that out. I was like-
I was actually waiting.
I liked it. I like it. Now, what I can't wait for is Thursday. That's, I have to, I will explicitly say that I am speaking because I will be leaving work and I will be going straight to that meeting and I have said repeatedly that I am not speaking as Deputy Kirk Crossley. I will be speaking as Counselor Crossley because I'm not meant to. I got a whole lot of stuff to say. I'm pissed. It's, oh, yeah, you know. My frustrating-
The thing is, I'm more, I'm more about like, can we just let people do their job?
Yeah. Imagine that.
Who are you talking about?
I actually, I feel like I said it in one of our meetings a couple of weeks ago. I did say it. I did, I think I did say it. I have no problem telling it to their face either.
You get that. I-
Because they did, they did sprinkle all the whole like budget stuff in there too, like before we approved the budget. I think, and I think that's where my frustration is. We have gone through the antilocal agreement for God knows how long. Why is this all of a sudden a thing that is like, why is this a topic of discussion right now? Why is this like really necessary?
So annoying. No, but-
That's what we need more of. Yeah, that's bad. Sliding backwards.
Oh, you another back?
Everyone does that, not just you.
Mm-hmm. Hmm, mm-hmm. Interesting.
Ooh, it's 7 o'clock. It is.
Dave, I just remembered, when I was in Greece, I saw a dude that was your dead ringer.
Really?
Came down the street and I was like-
I was wondering why you didn't say hi to me.
I was like, "What meeting are you heading to? Steinsel Town Council doesn't meet in Athens, everyone knows that."
She's having to live in another city, another town right now in Vermont because she's between places and stuff. So, we managed to get it to limp over to this garage, right? And the guy's like, "Okay, cool."
Pieces of my soul did not mean that.
"We'll look at it tomorrow and call you back." And of course, I'm leaving tomorrow. So, she's texting me today and she's like, "It's gonna be there for two, two-plus weeks because they're so backed up and they haven't even gotten to take a look at it." And I'm like, "Well, that doesn't sound like what they said they were gonna do, you know? At least take a look at it." And I said, "Well, if we do, we will figure something out and we'll call other garages." And she's like, "Well, hold off because I'm hoping to talk to them more time."
We should do it for her.
And she just, so I called the place again and started crying and basically told him my life story. And they said they'd take a look at it tomorrow. Girl boss.
Sometimes the tears just have to come out.
I know, she's like, "No, man." I know.
I kinda like that idea. We tried to make small talk and I feel like if we'd done a tractor pull, we'd be besties all over again. How many Harrodsburg, that's, that's the measure. How many Harrodsburg days does it take till you start exchanging small talk again?
Yeah. Am I quite enough?
Yeah.
It's just-
Yeah.
So, we're programing at 13,000 each time.
Anything from the, from Jamie? What, she said she served.
She's, she's-
That's what I'm thinking, but even so, the way-
Like, I don't imply that.
But there's also this thing called credibility.
Right. I don't have a doctor. I cannot see a doctor. I can only see her to-
Yeah.
Don't have to actually. Have that much left to poke.
At least there is one. Okay. A recess. I, you cannot pay me now. To clerk.
Right, right, right. And that's where I'm like, two and a half weeks ago.
True. Yelling. Let's hear that. He looks like, "We shall do that." Why am I doing? You've already gotten the first, by the way, I watched- Another chip we give.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I've been, I've been going there for a while. I, I, I like it. You? Yeah. It's a happy place. Yeah. I can't get Amy to go. She's just not into it. Not into it. When your mother-in-law, she's a- She's into it. She is. She, I think she's slowly warmed to me. She's like, "You'll probably be all right." Because people think she's like a nutty old lady, but she's really just messing with people. Yeah, she's, she, yeah, we've had many good conversations. She's great.
We're gonna come back in just a minute, everybody. All right. I think we're just about ready to start here. We will resume our meeting. We left off at item 15 and this is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA requests. As has been the case for several meetings, we have not had any ARPA requests before us that have been agreed upon or proposed by commissioners, agreed upon by us. But I expect that to change pretty quick given the nature of the federal law. And to that, and so, we've got a giant time clock here we gotta be aware of. The auditor has graciously offered to kinda update us where we are with dollars as we prep and prime for that discussion with the commissioners, which we've got as agenda item number one to get on track to make sure we're not losing a penny of these crucial dollars. So, auditor, I'm gonna yield to you, Ms. Gregory, if you wanna kinda update us where, where things are at in the lay of the land right now with ARPA funds.
Absolutely. Thank you. First, I was able to connect with the Commissioners Administrator today and they are sending out a doodle poll to schedule the next joint meeting. So, you should receive some information on that shortly. Moving on, just a quick refresher on the ARPA funding. The county was awarded a total amount of $28,830,982. Of that, we have currently budgeted a total of $21,998,430, leaving nearly $8 million unbudgeted at this time. So, $7,995,000. So, of the projects that we have budgeted, some remain unobligated, meaning we have appropriated them, but we haven't signed a contract yet. So, of those that are awaiting obligation, we have the ARPA Rural Housing Repair, which it is ongoing, it is in progress. It's just, we're not contracting specifically with one vendor. So, as requests come in, it's being obligated and, and then expended. So, there is an unspent appropriation for that project of $286,000. The Convention Center improvements, we also have an unspent appropriation. However, the Commissioners have made a lot of progress with contracts. In fact, just last week, approved quite a few. So, this is not, the notes there need to be updated once again as more information was gathered after this was sent. Let's see here, we have the ARPA Septic Assistants. There, we have a request out for five different quotes to assist with five properties. So, it is moving forward and, you know, they're kind of waiting to see where those fall, to see how many can really be impacted by this project. Moving on, we have the ARPA Paving and Drainage Project with the Highway Department that is gonna be completely expended. I connected with the Highway Director today and Ms. Ridge, she has no doubt all will be expended and obligated by the end of 2024. Bicentennial-
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Can you just tell me when, what line you're on when you start?
Oh, I apologize. That was line 21.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to line 23, A and B. That project is nearly complete. Ms. Ridge anticipates another roughly $13,000 to be invoiced. So, that did come in under budget. So, this will have to be adjusted and there will be more money returned that will need to be obligated. Okay, and budgeted, obviously. The Karst Wireless Internet. Okay, so, this, a quote was received and the Parks Board communicated about this and they are not excited about the $8,000 a year service fee expenses. So, we're gonna have to revisit that and have some more discussion on that item, on that project.
That would be what normally everyone would pay for, I mean, they would pay $8,000, but that's the service providing. Got it, okay.
Exactly. I mean, just for example, I know personally, I pay about $100 a month. So, it's a larger area. It seems reasonable. Anyhow, ARPA gun safes, the Commissioners have purchased some. They're still going to have further expenses, so we'll need to come back for an update a little bit later on that one as well. Summit Hill Housing, we are waiting on the signed contract. The MOU has been drafted and so, as soon as that is executed by all parties, that will be considered obligated. So, that it is making progress, we're in a good place there. Line 36, the ARPA Housing Infrastructure. So, design started, however, that also requires discussion at the next joint meeting. There's gonna have to be some changes with regard to that project. And Mr. Cockrell will be able to provide a better update. Let's see, the Karst Farm Fields Project, I connected with the Parks Director and that is gonna be completely obligated and expended prior to the end of the year. And then, the Airport Stormwater Drainage, there's going to be, it appears that there's going to be a reversion. That is, that portion is coming in under budget as well so far. So, that was just an update on what still needs to be obligated as far as what we have budgeted now. If you'll recall from, I stated that we do still have roughly $8 million that needs to be budgeted and obligated on top of that. So-
So, I see hands flying up.
Sure, I'll do my best.
I'm gonna start, Counsel McKim, working my way that way.
I, thank you. I just wanted to clarify on the Airport Stormwater Drainage Project, that was only for the detailed engineering study, right? Not the actual work.
That's correct.
Counsel Munson?
So, do you have a total or a subtotal of those that are coming in under budget that we may need to plan appropriations for?
I'm certainly going to get that information to you. I was only made aware of this request earlier today, so unfortunately, I was scrambling to-
So, do you have a total or a subtotal of those that are coming in under budget that we may need to plan appropriations for?
I'm certainly going to get that information to you. I was only made aware of this request earlier today, so unfortunately I was scrambling to collect information. You're welcome.
Very nice scramble.
Thank you for doing this.
Very nice scramble.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, regarding the airport, that it came in under budget, do, do they have other needs that, that, just like we did at the Convention Center when we had, when the elevator came in under budget, they just went ahead and moved forward with other project requests?
Well, as Counselor McKim mentioned, this is only for the survey portion, so kind of like the review and like pre-design phase of this project, so this is just going to tell us what needs to happen to actually correct the issue.
I get that.
But there are definitely needs.
But let's say if they used that, and there's still money, and didn't take that much for that, there may be something else entirely unrelated out at the airport that they could use this money for.
Perhaps, all parties would have to agree, it would have to go into the plan and then be appropriated, it would be a separate project.
Just like we did, I mean, like we did with the, with the Convention Center, that, that elevator came in way under budget, and the Commissioners put in place all of the approvals to move forward with other items that they redid, like the, one of the meeting rooms with carpet and whatever. So, I just want to make sure the airport has the opportunity to see what else they might need.
Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, Ms. Gregory, it seems to me like, as you were reading down the list of those projects where obligation was needed, that the inverse of those that didn't need an obligation, the projects we've already completed, seem to be where there was a single contracting agency, and there was, the projects were much simpler, and that really helped maybe your office streamline the dollars from this fund into the community. Am I getting that right?
You are, that's an ideal situation, obviously, but, you know, we'll, we'll work with whatever's thrown at us.
So as this council and the Board of Commissioners works against the deadline that President Decker talked about, it seems to me like those types of projects should be prioritized, as opposed to ones with multiple different contracting agencies and very complex, because it seems like it's taking us a while to get those going, it's taking us a while to get those dollars out the door.
Yeah, that, that's true.
All right, thank you.
Counselor McKim.
Actually, it's okay.
With the response to that, we know that the, it was taking a while to get the trustees on board and understand the, the needs, but as they begin to do it, and they have contractors that they're accustomed to working with, or they know that they are providing good service to the people for a reasonable price, they're moving forward with this. And so I think we, you know, it took them a while to get there, I think kudos to Rita Barrow of Van Buren Township, who just got all over this, and she loves making sure that she's providing this service, and so I would not want to see that ability to, for the different trustees to work with their provided, their providers for, and then we're not waiting on one provider to run from one area to the next, so, but I think we need to get the message out to the people to go to their trustees and say that, not just at a Commissioners' meeting, but let's talk about it on Facebook, let's talk about it with our friends, so that people will really do that. I, I mean, like in Steinsville, when I talked with those folks, I'm not sure they were aware of, in fact, as I know they were, and I'm aware of it, so.
It's good programming. I'm going to call on Counselor Crossley in just one second. I do want to note, here in a moment, since we are thinking about ideas, I'm going to, if members of the public, because this has been on our agenda over and over, if they have some comments they wish to make, we will go to them shortly. Counselor Crossley.
Thank you. I'm trying to go through my email here and look, and Ms. Gregory, you might not, you might or you might not, and I want to ask, line number 24, it says IU Disabilities Survey Program. Is that the contract that was for the Center for Collaborative Systems Change from a very long time ago?
It is.
Okay, so, we're, you wouldn't know any progress or anything on?
I don't have a great update on that, other than it is completely obligated, I mean, we've executed the contract, so invoices are being paid as they're received.
Okay, yeah, and my only other comment is, obviously, we're under a deadline, we're now almost month six into the year, and so we have to, just for general public notice, we have to have plans for this by the end of this year, spent by 2026, down to the very penny, or else we might do some disservice by having to pay money back if we don't use the funds properly and do what we have to do, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we got some work to do, so that doodle poll, I'm really looking forward to, because we, we have lots of conversations and to discuss, and there's a big, big need in our community and a lot of other things, nearly $8 million, there's a lot that we can do with that, so hopefully we can get that done soon. Thank you.
And on that, I want, do you want to say, counselors, think about what those things that we've maybe not touched in a minute. I also think it'd be helpful, and the auditors have been so helpful in helping us with the Commissioners, to go back to that original set of lists, what fell off, what shouldn't have, and those sorts of things. I'm going to open this up for some comments from members of the public, if they have anything to offer wisdom to share. I see one rising now, so come forward in that, you hill room, or raise your hand on teams, and come on forward. Yeah, you're welcome here. And then, set, state your name and tell us what your thoughts.
Is it on?
It's on.
It is, welcome. Hi, everyone, Alex Crowley. Some of you may know I was with the City of Bloomington. When I left the City of Bloomington in August of last year, I went to what's called the Indiana Energy Independence Fund, which is a nonprofit green bank that serves statewide across the state of Indiana. And a green bank basically is a mission-oriented organization focused on bringing capital to underserved populations, whether that's residents, commercial, nonprofits, even cities, towns, counties, schools, so it's the broad spectrum, and it's, it's really about where is the market not working to help get people to be able to be part of the energy transition? So that's what we do, and the reason I'm here today, having spent some time myself with ARPA in my previous life, I know it's hard to spend, and, you know, as, as Council Member Iverson said about, you know, simplicity, totally get that. So what I wanted to just ask today is, for permission, really, to engage with the auditor, to figure out if there's a potential way that the county might be able to deploy some of its legacy, or its unspent ARPA funding, even as like a last-minute safety valve, where, where you might be able to take some money, and the proposal that I have is that by spending ARPA money on interest rate buy-downs, so where there is a financing program that maybe is at 7%, and a low-income household can't afford that, by buying the interest rate down to zero or to a much lower number, that will allow people who wouldn't otherwise be able to participate in the clean energy transition, to be able to participate. And so our product that the Green Bank is going to go to market with is going to be as low as it possibly can, but as you know, interest rates these days are kind of tough. And the nice thing about using ARPA money for this is that it's kind of one and done, right, which is great for ARPA, it's not necessarily good if you, you know, you use grant money that way, because you can't recycle it, but in the case of ARPA, it's kind of a unique situation where you kind of have to spend it. So what, what I would propose to you, if, if it's all right with you, is to have a discussion with, with the Auditor's Office, and basically say, this is how this would work, we're actually pitching this to every, you know, 92 counties, so, so this is going to be a kind of very simple process that everybody, it's kind of a plug-and-play, it could be used as a safety valve, you don't have to, unless you want to, you know, sort of pre-commit too much, we'd have to kind of right-size it to what we think the opportunity is in Monroe County, and just to give you a sense of economics, if it's a $10,000 loan for an energy efficiency or renewable energy play, I'll use that $10,000, this is a number, and you were to take that and, and buy interest down from, call it 5% or 6% to, you know, 1% or 2% even, it's roughly $1,500 per, or $2,000 per instance, right? Now that varies, it depends on the length of the term and the size of the loan and all of the, all of that, but that's sort of what we're talking about, so you can kind of do the math, right? And you can figure out, well, if that's a per-instance situation, and you wanted to put a certain number of dollars, you just, you can do the math to figure out how many households would benefit. So the advantage is, you could pick, you know, just the, the Green Bank, and again, we're not in this to make money, we're not, we're a nonprofit, so you pick the Green Bank, you can park your money there, overcoming some of the issues of, you know, things unraveling, you park it, and then over two-year period, we would have projected out the number of loans that we would want to buy down using that amount. It would be restricted to Monroe County, so that your money would only go to Monroe County, and any other county would have its own restriction, and once you were done, that was it. And so you would not be leaving money on the table, and it's just kind of a turnkey, potential turnkey solution, if you're interested in doing that. So that's what I wanted to talk about, and I'm certainly, I don't know if there are questions, but I'll pause there.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Yes.
I actually do, thank you, I guess, can you just describe the kinds of projects that would be supported by?
Yeah, so Green Bank Financing typically will cover everything from energy efficiency, and that can be everything from insulation, windows, heat pumps, roofing, you know, that whole kind of weatherization, so when you do, as you know, when you do, when you do the, the investment on renewable energy, you want to actually first do energy efficiency.
Efficiency, yeah.
So, everything on that end of the spectrum, kind of preparing a house, tightening it up, and then also at the other end, which is more of the renewables, so geothermal and, and, you know, solar, you know, so the, the kind of renewable package of, of project types, so you have the before, sort of, and then the after, and all of that is covered by Green Bank Financing and would be covered by this. Now, in the, in the world of efficiency, you, you know, if you were to do a hot water heater, it would have to hit a certain threshold of energy efficiency, you couldn't go to a just terribly inefficient, you know, that, it's, we're not just replacing, we want a level of efficiency, but that efficiency is what generates the savings from the household that allows them to cover any kind of financing, even financing that is at 0%.
Is this for existing homes?
It's for both existing, I mean, it's for new, I mean, we will, as a Green Bank, do new construction, existing, multifamily, single-family, so there's a, a variety of different residential types. What I would propose to you, because of the time limitation from ARPA, is that you probably would want to focus on existing homes, because you don't want to be timing out because of new construction.
So, now with the ARPA, we're, we're trying to have programs that people can go to their trustees and, and the, they're not paying that back at all, there's not a loan.
That's a grant, yeah.
That's a grant, but, but maybe you have some folks out there who could use a new roof, who maybe wouldn't, wouldn't be asking for something for free, but maybe this would be a loan, and they would feel like they were getting a gift, they were getting a loan, and doing a roof or replacing really old windows, or getting some insulation, or...
Yeah, that's a great point, so the trustees are great stewards of, of really kind of shepherding money to help people, especially at the lower income levels. The way that we think about it is, we say, any project, whether it's a single-family home or a very large project, first we want that person to take advantage of everything they can that doesn't cost them any kind of, you know, financing liability, right? So if there are grants, they should take care of that, if there are rebates that the utility offers, they should, they should do that, if there are tax abatements, or tax credits as a result of the work that they're doing, now, a lot of lower-income households don't have the liability to justify that, but in, in, you know, you just kind of knock out all the things that are there for the taking, and then what's left is sort of where the financing would come in. So to your point, if there are trustee-led programs that would be better solutions, go at it, right? We are not trying to displace those at all, but if there are gaps, and that, and that gap is the reason why the individual can't do the thing that they want to do, and they don't have maybe access to either any trustee funding or enough, that's where you can have financing have a play.
So the gap, are you saying the gap might be that maybe their income for the household is maybe more than what's allowed under the trustee program?
Well, that's one gap, where they just are not qualified, but another gap may be where they are qualified, but the work, let's say that the project is $10,000, and they can get $6,000 from the trustees, they're still left with a $4,000 gap, and, and, you know, Green Bank can fill that too.
Interesting.
Counselor Iverson.
So I, I've benefited greatly from hearing this presentation a couple times now, as you presented to the Environmental Commission here in the county, and, and so, one of the, the contextualizing pieces of information that I like to provide at this point is that a lot of the surveys that we're getting from people as to why they're not converting into the green energy revolution is cost. It's not time, it's not effort, it's cost, and I think that's really an important thing when you're talking to Hoosiers who are struggling to buy milk at the grocery store, and, you know, you put solar panels on, on a roof, and it can save households up to $1,500 a year, and I think that's really the benefit of something like this, and I, I just really appreciate this presentation for those reasons.
Counselor Wilt.
Thank you.
I'm curious as to what the income level restriction is for this type of program? I mean, are we, are we looking specifically only at very low-income households, or is that a negotiable thing with each county, or how does that work?
It could be negotiable on a, on a county-by-county basis. I, again, as, as I sort of mentioned earlier, that the, the market works pretty well for higher income, it doesn't work extremely well, but in, in, you know, if you wanted to put solar on your house and you have a certain income level, you can go get a second mortgage, you know, you can, and you get the tax benefit from, I mean, like, you know, there's just, there are things in the market that kind of benefit the higher income levels, and so the people who are suffering the most are the ones, in fact, who are not participating because they can't afford it, and so the, so this is like double whammy, on the one hand, the market's not working for them, on the other hand, they're the ones who are taking it on the chin most severely, so the reason why the, the Green Bank focuses on underserved populations by the current capital market is precisely because the rest of the market is kind of taking care of itself to some degree. But if there are people who are interested, there's no reason not to provide the funding for them, it's just that if you have limited resources, you just have to be careful how you spend it, basically.
Sure, can I follow?
Please, please.
And that makes perfect sense, I, I guess, I'm more looking at, you know, what we sometimes miss, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, well, there's that, there's, that could mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and are we, are we looking at above, you know, because there are folks who are struggling, who, who don't meet certain standards for low income, you know, they're above the poverty level, and yet, they still have trouble, and often, it's these types of projects that they can't afford. So I guess I'm wondering, would we be reaching, or could we be reaching that group as well?
Yeah, and that's why I would think of it as being low and moderate income, right? And, and, you know, you can kind of set that where you want, but let's say it's 120% is typically the workforce housing cutoff for, for, of the area median income, you could go beyond that if you want, it's really a county-by-county decision, because if you have a certain amount of money, and you know that that's going to turn into just serving a certain amount of people, the question is, how do you want that money to work? How do you want it distributed between, you know, different income bands?
Counselor, are you, Counselor Munson?
I have a very different question, and it really is into the nuts and bolts of meeting the deadlines. I think we all know that the projects that, that we've reviewed with our auditor are coming up against some deadlines, and some are going to have some funds left over, but how do you, how does this Green Bank work with expending the actual dollars from ARPA? Because if we, if we grant them to the Green Bank, they have to be spent by, by date X.
Yeah, so the way it would work is if, let's say, I'm going to use rough numbers here, let's say you took $100,000, and use, the, the first thing is, you would commit that to the Indiana Energy Independence Fund, the Green Bank. We would park that in a restricted account for Monroe County only. You would have fulfilled the obligation to have committed that money by the end of 2024, then it would have to be spent. Then it would have to be spent between the beginning of '25 and the end of '26.
And that's your job.
And that would be our job, and we're going to be in the market anyway. So we are going to be ramp, we're actually launching within 30, we've actually soft-launched, but we're about to launch officially with the products that we're going to go to market with. We're going to be out there. So really, all you're doing is you're layering the money onto an existing set of programs that are in the market, and you are, for those people, for those populations that you want to target, you are pushing down kind of higher than normal interest rate, not from Green Bank financing, but just because the market is high. And so what you're doing is you're kind of lowering the interest rate for populations that you want to serve with that lower interest rate product. And it would just layer on top of what we're doing. So from our perspective, it's actually not that complicated. But absent something like that, if we wanted to lower the interest rate down to zero, we would either have to bring our own capital to do that, which we're doing, or blend it in and come other, come up with other ways of doing it. But by using ARPA, it's a, it's a, you, you're effectively paying the credit union that would be making the loan. We are not issuing the loan. We are partnering with lenders, and they would go to market, let's say that they go with a 6.9% interest rate loan for, and you would say, we want that to be 0%, 1%, whatever it is, 2%. And, and you would pay the credit union, we would pay on your behalf, the credit union for that loan in Monroe County, one time, and then the credit union would lower the interest rate on that particular loan. So it's very transactional.
So, how many years is a loan?
A loan can go up to seven or eight years.
Okay, so, if an individual or a family, whatever, and they have a home that maybe they've got their original windows, let's say a lot of cold air, maybe they have no insulation in the sidewalls, a lot of homes built had, that was back when you heated with coal or whatever, and there's no insulation in the sidewalls. So would the green energy then assist them with replacing their windows with something that was energy efficient, and replacing the siding with some insulation back in behind the siding, and then maybe some of that more insulated type of siding, not the, you know, sort of siding that has no insulation at all? So if they fit in whatever guidelines as far as income that this county would determine, then they could get a loan from whatever lending institution, and then they would determine, if you, if your group said, we'll buy it down 2%, and it was setting at 8%, you'd buy it down to 6, and they'd have seven or eight years to pay it back.
Yeah, that's a, yeah.
Am I following?
Yes, and so, you know, in your instance, the house is, if you don't redo the insulation, then you're just bleeding money out because the heat's just going out, right? So that's why insulation, and windows, and roofing, and, you know, a number of things that you wouldn't think of as being energy-related are, because, because they will reduce the energy burden that that household has as a result of the fact that they have leaky walls and leaky windows.
Right.
Yeah. So yes, that would be eligible.
And then, is that the, what happens if they already have a mortgage on the house? Is this like a second mortgage on their house? Is the loan against the house, or is it like a...
No, it's unsecured.
It's an unsecured loan?
Yes.
Wow.
So they could, if they wanted to, fold it into, you know, refinance. Let's say mortgage rates come down, or, you know, they could, they could fold it in, and then they could get some benefits off that, because there are tax deductions from that. But, but this is an unsecured loan that would be separate from their mortgage.
And that's usually a much higher interest rate.
It is, right.
Yes. Sorry.
Well, that, that...
Can you tell I used to sell real estate?
Yes, I never forget. The one, the one thing that I kind of think about always is that common denominator of folks out there. So for instance, a person in a home that, in the winter, they're, they, they know about that insulation issue, and they know about those windows. I mean, shoot, in our, my own home, those windows have more wind going through it than a field, and that's not good. But to me, because it's an unsecured loan, you basically help bridge that gap on that, and kind of make up that difference. And I always think about, whereas I know solar is exceedingly important to all this in this discussion, we got a ton of people that their windows are just belching air, they have insulations not within a mile of that house. And that kind of strikes my fancy a little bit on this. I was going to see if the, I was going to see if the auditor has any questions or comments on this herself, since she is our expert in the room.
Oh, thank you. I would definitely love to meet with you. I think it would be great if we could perhaps have our counsel, and commissioner's attorney, and the commissioner's administrator present, just so we could make progress a little bit more quickly. Additionally, just note for the council, this would likely need to be a lost revenue project, which there are, we're, that's our, we're lacking funds in that category, although we will have some reversions, so there will be a little bit opening up. But it sounds like this is, could be similar to the rural housing repair project as well, just with energy efficiency and providing some of that assistance. So there might be a different, a few different ways we could work it in.
And the potential savings for...
Yes.
Homes where then they can... Thank you. Any other questions, comments, counselors? Well, it's good to have you here, favorite son of the community. Thank you so much for your comments. I do want to throw out to any entity watching this, and any counselor, if there are ideas for these dollars, they need to be quick ideas. We need to go back to our well, look at the list, and be prepared to move with dispatch for impact. But this is important work. I also want to mention that this is, would not be possible had the willing members of Congress and the president not made this very difficult legislation come to us. So we got to do our part and get that done. All right. Anything else on ARPA from the auditor's perspective? Thank you.
Not at this time. I will definitely update further. As I noted, there are, there have been updates since we sent this, so you'll get the latest and greatest as soon as we have it for you.
Thank you. And maybe in the quiet of summer, if we have one, we can make this happen real quickly with the commissioners. Yes, Ms. Moser?
I just wanted to point out that ARPA hasn't been advertised for the June 11th meeting, so if you'd like the option to appropriate, we should table these to the next meeting.
So counselors, without objection, can we table these to our next meeting?
Please.
Yes.
So, thank you very much. Good catch. All right, let's go to item 16, a request from the auditor's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and Fund 1112-0000, Economic Development Lit, in the amount of $225,750 in the Services category.
Second.
Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. This is just a housekeeping item. The interest payment for this debt was overlooked during the budgeting process, so I'm just asking for that appropriation now, so that I may pay it timely.
Questions, comments from council?
I submitted my question earlier, and so, no, everything's good.
Thank you very much. Let's do this, let's go to comments from the public. If you have a comment on this, please come forward and at you, or raise your hand in Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to item B. Oh, pardon me, that is my part, not Counselor Crossley. The auditor is going to give us an update on Fund 1108, Bid Deposits and Bond Holdings. My apologies.
Okay, so Fund 1108, Bid Deposits and Bond Holdings has been managed by the Highway Department historically, although this fund is utilized by both the Highway and Planning Department. So moving forward, both departments would like to manage their own lines within this fund. So in order to do that, we need to reorganize and use locations, which is how we manage shared funds. So just providing that update to you for full transparency.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, comments from counselors? Seeing none. We will go to a public comment on this item. No, wait a minute, we don't need any public comment. My part, any, so, all right, so we're done?
Yep, we're done.
All right, let's move to item C. Pardon me.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request in Fund 1000-0002, General Fund Auditor, to move account line 10044, internal auditor from 35 hours, 35 to 40 hours, with an effective date of August 11th, 2024. The auditor is also requesting to add account line 16800, Transitional Temporary Training Position, 35 hours, to allow for a period of training of the new internal auditor from July through August of 2024.
Second.
Okay, our current internal auditor has been accepted to law school and is going to be leaving us. So that means we're going to have an opening in my department for this position, and we would like to have the opportunity to train for that extended period of time, just because there's, there's a lot that goes on with that position, as you can imagine. In addition to that, this is the only position in my office that is at 35 hours. So just to be equitable, we would like this to be bumped up to 40 hours, so that all the positions within the auditor's office are 40 hours, and there is no lack of work. Now, to be completely transparent, you won't find evidence of this person working over 35 hours because they've been a grad student, they recently graduated, and they just didn't have the capacity for that. There is not a shortage of work, however. Any questions?
Questions, comments from council? Counselor Iverson?
This is officially a trend, 35 to 40 hours.
The difference being that everyone else in my department is already at 40 hours, just to be clear.
I'm waiting on Councilmember Wiltz to speak up. I'm thinking, I'm over here thinking.
Questions or comments from council? While council...
I'll comment that. My question about how many people in your office was already anticipated and answered by you, and I'm glad to appreciate that info.
I don't mind supporting it, because I generally say that 40 hours, as Councilmember McKim has said, that I think we're being a little unfair to the other department that was here asking the same thing. And we said, no, we want to talk about it, we want to look at numbers, et cetera. And, you know, and I represent the auditor, and I represent sheriff, both. But I just think we need to, and I think maybe it would be really great if the auditor would offer to wait till the next meeting, just like the sheriff's department is. But I, I will move to table this until our next meeting. And I'm sorry, but that's...
Got a motion to table this, in keeping it with the other positions that were tabled under similar circumstance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McKim. Any comments on the tabling motion?
I think it's, I think it's fair. I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a waste of time.
All right. Thank you for that. We've got the tabling motion before us, let's do a roll call on that.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Oh, you now look, you're...
All right, so we...
Now you are.
And everything else tonight. All right, and that takes us to item 17 on our agenda, which is Counselors' Comments. So counselors, I will, who wants to offer comments? Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I'll make two quick comments. First of all, I just want to recognize our Veterans Services Officer, Stephen Miller, and our Veterans Benefits Coordinator, Andrew Blake, for just a great job on Monday for Memorial Day. And it's a day that we remember those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, and both at Rose Hill and Valhalla, there were just really wonderful ceremonies supporting those who have lost their loved ones as they made that greatest sacrifice. So I know that many of us here on this dais were there, and just thank those two individuals for the work that they did, not only on Memorial Day, but every single day. If you are a veteran looking for services, you cannot find better people than Steve and Andrew. So thank you for that. I also want to mention that on May 15th, I was in this very room when the county commissioners made statements about the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation that could be construed by some as constricting an organization or an individual's constitutional rights. I really specifically seek that statements be clarified, that public decisions regarding contractual relationships or county employment are not predicated on agreement of opinion. I ask that further elucidation occur, that an individual or an organization that contracts with Monroe County can freely exercise speech, that speech that can occur in the pages of the newspaper, the halls of power at local, state, and/or federal levels, or on personal blogs, webpages, social media, or other areas. I just want to make sure that we are all upholding the oaths that we took. Thank you.
Counselor Iverson. Counselor Wiltz, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Iverson, for bringing up the commissioners' meeting from the 15th, because I, I've been out of town quite a bit this month, and was not in town for that. I did watch the meeting, and I particularly was disappointed that a difference of, of opinion and, and even a strong difference of opinion would come between our elected officials and our community's economic vitality, is how I look at it. I really feel that, that that, the statements that were made and the decision that was made, that I hope maybe will be reconsidered regarding the contract with BEDC, is not in the best interest of our community, and the justifications that were given were not satisfying to me as one of, one of the, one of the elected officials who supported that, funding that contract, and as a community member and a citizen in Monroe County.
Counselor Wiltz. Other council comments? Counselor Munson?
No, I, too, was surprised and dismayed by those comments, and I know there is a lack of communication about the, about the issues relating primarily to land use planning, the new zoning, and lots that are suitable for residential development. I want to call your attention to the work of our planning staff in putting together a conversion chart that presents information on the existing zoning areas, as well as the new zoning. the new zoning areas, and is a side-by-side comparison. And you can find this on Monroe County CDO under the May 2024 update, and so you will see this. I know that the planning staff are planning to come to the county council to present this to all of us, and they're going to do the same with the commissioners. But this helps clarify some, something about the number of areas that have been taken out of residential development, and it is not as alarming as some people would have you think. Now, I'm not going to read the numbers to you, you can all go over them yourself, and it's a very detailed chart, and it takes some time to get your eyes into it and, and look at it. But I think, I think this is a useful tool for our community to get closer to being on the same page, so to speak, and to, and to clarify information that has been confusing and misleading. Thank you.
I've got Counselor Crossley next.
I have to go first. I don't want to take it. She's gone. I paid till eight o'clock. Okay. As we figure out parking. Okay, so a couple of comments that I have here. One, I just wanted to, I haven't had a chance to really dive into what some of the department heads had sent into us, or to us via email today, busy with work and whatnot, but I do want to say that I appreciate the department heads that came out and spoke on behalf of their employees in regards to the, the switch that will be happening, and so I'm looking forward to watching tomorrow's commissioner meetings, among other reasons, to watch that meeting as well. So, I, I just want to say thank you to the department heads, who really go to bat for their employees, because employees are the backbone of county government, and without them, yeah, without them, it would be less. Two, I do want to echo the comments of my colleagues here, and as one of the appointments too, I do sit on our BEDC and a part of that. Disappointed and dismayed are nice words to say about hearing those particular comments, and I do hope that we can come to a resolution, but most importantly, I really would hope that, you know, we respect all those that come before us, whether we like what they say, or whether we don't like what they say. I think the respectability has to be something that we have to keep doing moving forward. So, I really look forward to, you know, hearing those things. And lastly, I am speaking of looking forward to things, I'm looking forward to our county ca, or county council joining our, our colleagues in the city for the work session of, you know, things related to the CIB. That is something that I've really have taken really close to home, lots of conversations related what to do with certain things. Really wish that some of these conversations could have happened during the interlocal agreement conversations, because we all have been privy to those conversations. Why now? I digress, but we will find out more, hopefully, as the world turns on Thursday. So, with that being said... That's all I have to say.
Counselor Hawke?
I have one minute. Okay. What I wanted to say was, she's a paper where all the probation officers, front probation department, I haven't read all the names, have signed on the petition to the commissioners. You all have a copy that if you want to sign on to, it would be lovely to let these departments know that you're supporting them, and you have that document in front of you. And so, I'm going to leave these documents here, because for whatever reason, they left it down here, and I don't need it. But I do want to say that, let's take this back to what the council might like to do, and what the commissioners might like to do. Remember, having, bringing us back to the BEDC, we had budgeted and appropriated for that, and sent the message that we supported that, and they went right around and said, we're not going to do it. Now, they're saying, even though many of us would support them taking a break on this insurance situation, and give our county employees a little break, a little breath, they're going to go around us and say they, they've already got the appropriation, they can just do it. Folks, the county council, the county commissioners, if we work better together, that would be lovely, but if we're not going to, then we're not going to. What's good for one is situation is good for another one.
Thank you, counsel.
And now, I want to go before I get a ticket.
And with that, we'll turn to Counselor McKim.
Thank you. I wanted to make a few comments on the city council draft letter in the convention center that Counselor Crossley mentioned. We'll have the opportunity to meet with the city council, the commissioners, and the mayor on May 30th to discuss this further, but I wanted to lay out some of my hot takes on the draft letter. No, I mean, they're, they're gentle. Overall, really the big picture, we have to remember that there's a fixed amount of money available for this project. Everyone involved has been crystal clear at that point, that only food and beverage revenues are going to be used to expand the convention center, and that's fine, but we also then have to be very cautious of putting a lot of extra requirements that increase the cost of the project, or siphoning off food and beverage revenues for purposes other than the convention center, to a point where we won't actually be able to accomplish the project. So, in particular, I wanted to comment on several of the expectations outlined in the draft letter. In number two, the county, the city council plans to reserve 7.5% for other valid uses. Of course, the heavy lifting is done by the word "valid" here. The point of that original 7.5% figure in a letter of intent sent by the previous mayor was to ensure that the city would have food and beverage funds for connectivity and streetscape improvements that would directly serve and connect the, the convention center, and connect it to other city infrastructure, not to divert it to other priorities. I think it's premature, before we even have a plan and a cost for the convention center, to already start shaving off funds for other priorities. Please, let's make sure that we can actually accomplish this project first. The other thing to remember is that the building is going to need refresh before the bond is paid, so it's essential that food and beverage funds are reserved for building renovation and maintenance beyond the additional construction. Number eight reads, going forward, the CIB should not contract for services or make other financial commitments prior to receiving all necessary approvals from the Bloomington City Common Council, including budget approval. I think some clarification is needed on what "all necessary approvals" means. If this just means that the CIB's budget needs to be approved by the city council as per the interlocal, then there isn't any issue. The purpose of the CIB was to allow the project to proceed relatively unfettered by the hands of elected officials, other than budgetary oversight. So, I'm hoping this just means the CIB won't contract before their budget has been approved. Number 10 says, the project should have all requisite design approvals, such as plan commission approval prior to bonding. And honestly, this is more of a question to me, I don't know whether this is realistic or not, or whether this would create delays that would undermine the project or greatly increase cost. I'd like to hear a little bit more about this item. Is that standard city policy that has been applied to all previous projects, or is this a new requirement that's specific to this project? Number 13 says, new buildings that use public funding sources or land should not utilize combustion of fossil fuels for space heating and water heating. This is another requirement that I don't know much about. Is this a current city policy, or is this a new requirement for this project? Number 15 refers to the inclusion of sustainable transportation options, including A, an option for airport shuttles coordinated by the convention center, and B, consideration of a downtown circulator shuttle. Now, certainly being compatible with these two options makes sense, but while I think personally a downtown circulator is a great idea overall, it does go well beyond the scope of the convention center. I think some of the other comments in that item reflected an understanding of that. Number 16 also includes several areas of concern. The requirement for no skywalk connections may be potentially a sticking point, particularly if connection to an existing parking garage was the preferred means of providing parking, which I thought it was. Second, this item requires retention and inclusion of alleys whenever feasible. Again, the words, the wording "wherever feasible" may need to be clarified. So, for example, the eastern option for the convention center, which is ideal for utilizing the existing parking garage space, which I think is what the city wants, will likely require the vacation of an alley. So, I'm hoping that city goals related to quality of public space and utilizing existing parking garages and, and addressing the vitality of downtown can be, can be addressed while still allowing the eastern option to be viable. Sorry, I'm almost done. Number 19 states, any portion of the city project funded with city revenues should follow the city's percentage for the arts program. The convention center has always been a vehicle to support and showcase the local arts community. For current, the current convention center, for example, is a venue for the gallery walk. Local art is displayed throughout, and support of local arts is an important part of the convention center expansion project. And so, I would expect any expansion to continue to be a showcase for, for local art, potentially including some performing art as well as visual arts. But it isn't clear to me if being part of the percentage for the arts program means that an additional 1% of the food and beverage money spent on the project is expected to be deposited into a city arts fund. If that is the case, I refer us back to my comments above about increasing the costs and decreasing the revenue available for the program. I hope it just means that the convention center will continue to be a showcase for local arts. And then finally, number 20 requires options for civic uses of the space, and gives several examples of civic use. Some of them, such as market options for local craftmakers, performances, meeting rooms, have always been part of the convention center function in the community. We have to be careful to ensure that civic uses, though, are compatible with a center that is geared and structured to providing space for events. So, for example, a teen-focused youth center and senior care center are very interesting ideas. I think a lot of people miss RINOs, for example, and would like to see something like that return to the community, but co-locating it at the convention center is not necessarily a great idea, especially when there are other approaches that engage existing stakeholders in the teen space, such as Boys and Girls Club and the public library, and it would be better approach than trying to shoehorn it into the convention center. I understand that those are just examples of potential uses, I just want to make sure that we don't try to shoehorn incompatible civic functions into the convention center. So, sorry this was so long, we only have an hour scheduled to talk with the city council and other elected officials on Thursday, and I doubt we'll be able to talk about each of these, and of course, you may have your own thoughts and concerns. I just kind of wanted to get some of these thoughts on the table and communicate to them about the draft letters presented.
Thank you, Counselor McKim. And I would ask, if you're able and have notes available to circulate that among this council, I think it'd be good things for us to go back to. I even dare say, circulate it to our friends and colleagues, but maybe it's too early to have that, but...
Like I said, they're hot takes, but...
Well, they're good takes, they're strong takes, and we appreciate that. I'm going to offer some comments, and I'm going to center these around some different areas, and I'm going to mention about doers. One thing that I appreciate, being in, on county council, and particularly in this chair, is people that are doers, or things that get things done, and I, I like to talk about that a lot, because a lot of us spend time in meetings not always getting things done, and so you appreciate when you can get things done. So, some doers I'm going to talk about. Number one, our Southwest Library is going to open up on July 1st. So, tremendous news, and appreciate that, I actually expected a little worse news on that, and it was good to get that message and see the public announcement from our library director. I appreciate the doing that made that library, including people up here that played a, a part in that, and also the people working hard to get that thing back open, it's awesome. Second, I also appreciate the doers on the Bloomington BZA that helped the Elks Club getting their flagpoles certified. I know a little bit about that from family members that were involved, and that was a, a labor of love to honor our service members, and it was good to see a governmental body respond appropriately to that. And picking up a little bit from the comments of Counselor McKim, the one thing I'd only add to that is that all of this project, which the CIB was designed to help move, 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 all of this project is watched from afar by our friends in Indianapolis, and they've got a time watch that they may not always admit is going, but it's always wound and always watching. And if we falter on any of these considerations, it will be devastating, and it will be retreat from the taxpayers of this community and beyond that have paid into this, and so I always am looking at that alarm clock and thinking about those doers. I also want to mention the doers in this room that make this meeting happen, from our folks in TSD and CATS, that get this meeting out there, because my gosh, nobody would know any of these comments if they were bored enough to watch if they didn't do that, and thanks for adjusting the light earlier today. As well as picking up from Peter Iverson, Counselor Iverson, the doers from our Bloomington American Legion and our VFW that created two monumental ceremonies, they were just awesome, and it was a good tribute on a day that should be a tribute in all days. Last but not least, I do want to mention the BEDC in my comments. I always try to be pretty optimistic about things, and I, again, to focus on the doing, you kind of have to do it, although, as these counselors know, I can rant and swear a little bit with the best of them. Here's what I appreciate about the BEDC. I appreciate that despite last, two weeks ago, being not a very good into what we had budgeted for with that MOU and $30,000, I appreciate that in every conversation I've had with multiple BEDC officials, they continuously focus on the doing around their strategic plan, or bringing jobs here, or do you want us to go find more resources for you? And I, I'm glad that somebody is doing that in the community. I always want to make sure the county is not being a freeloader on that dime. You know, sometimes when you're in a community where you've got a wonderful university and a great Ivy Tech, and you have all these things around, you can sort of take this for granted. But I kind of go back to when I was a kid, particularly in the 90s, and those jobs started changing, and those plants started closing, and many of those places that we are supporting for reuse now were empty with a lot of sad faces walking out. And so, I appreciate that the BEDC is thinking about that, and in the conversations, they're talking about strategic plans and, and getting things done, and so I, I'm all for the doing that cements that relationship in any form that takes, and any official in this, this county government, or the city, or anyone that can help get that done. And so, I appreciate their work, I appreciate that they're out there, and they're, they're getting back on and, and going after things. We are going to have moments where people disagree. That's what a free country looks like, and that's okay. And that's just going to happen, and so I'm going to get back on my doing horse to help them do what they need to do, and support them, and get their wisdom and input, so that we always have the skills, the jobs, the things that we need to supply, and we're always thinking about that. So, anyway, I've talked too long, but I wanted to mention those doing things. I appreciate all the counselors that made this happen today.
The feistiest council comments round you had.
I know, yeah. Blame Duck McKim is good.
He's doing great.
One out of seven, I like.
And with that, and no further business before this body, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.